Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I'm hiding behind the flowers. Okay, we got the Kleenex, the baseball, and the flowers. Patty, we're ready. Could you please call roll?
Mayor Tinsley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Javelin.
Here.
Councilmember Primorosa.
Here.
Councilmember Moreno. Councilmember Woods.
Okay, moving on to additions, deletions, and modifications.
No ma'am.
Okay, I would like to consider if the council would consider moving Resolution 30, 2017, to after, hold on, let me find it, to, right, after 20, to after Resolution 20, 2017, and before Ordinance 10, 2017.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, and we're going to go on to announcements and presentations. Do we have any? I don't think so. None? Okay. Then we're going to start with items of resident interest and board committee reports. I'm going to start with Carl. None? Wow. Okay, Maria, I guess it's up to you.
Maria always has a ledge. Well, yes. Microphone on, thank you. Good evening all. Yes, okay, Palm Beach North Governmental Affairs Committee, thanks Ron for doing a great presentation of Palm Beach Gardens Plan for the $30 million bond expenditure. Several of us attended the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast with Business Development Board Executive Director Kelly Smallridge. Ms. Smallridge always does a great presentation showing the growth in our business community, and she did highlight several of our Palm Beach Gardens businesses such as Zimmer Biomet and United Technologies Center for Intelligent Business Buildings, excuse me. At the Forum Club, there was a presentation from Jack Lovatla and Richard Corcoran about the pros and cons of Enterprise Florida and Visit Florida, very apropos given the bill about to be brought forward. Sand Hill Crane Golf Course, we had the Clubhouse Cornerstone Ceremony, which I attended with Eric, Bert, and Marcy, and it's exciting to see the progress of our clubhouse, and I look forward to the grand opening in November. Right? 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 I got the thumbs up. Okay. PBGYAA Baseball Opening Day Ceremony with all of the council. Congratulations to Bert for being honored and throwing out the first pitch, and Marcy, Bert, and Eric also left with this fabulous trophy. I also attended a PGA Magazine forum where the focus was on best practices at facilities around the country to grow the game of golf, and Charlotte, I'll pass that on to you. Along with Carl, we went to the F-35 Presentation at Pratt &amp; Whitney, and I'd like to thank Brian Mast and Tom Rudy for attending the event as well. This is a long one. Macedonian Orthodox Church Ribbon Cutting Grand Opening Celebration, and on behalf of the city and the rest of the council, I'd like to welcome them into our city, and they did pass on that it was wonderful working with our staff, so I wanted to let you know that. Frenchman's Creek External Affairs Annual Breakfast featuring Brian Mast, and it was great to see many of our fellow council people from Jupiter and Juneau, along with State House Representative Rick Roth, and we learned more about the workings of Congress from Congressman Brian Mast. Artie Grau, what a great job, and I'm sure all of you in the audience went there, everyone on the council was there, and I just have to say a big shout out to the staff and volunteers of the Palm Beach North Chamber because year after year they produce such a great event. And last but definitely not least, being the professional golfer in the room, the Honda Classic, attended by, and I hope everyone in this room attended the Honda Classic, because what can I say, it was another fantastic year with another great winner in Ricky Fowler, who is a local boy at the moment, and it's exciting when a local athlete lifts up the winner's cup. This world-class event is not just a golf tournament, but a nearly week-long celebration with activities, fireworks, concerts, golf, and friendship, and it was very wonderful to see everyone there. And I'm sure there was more, but that's my list because that's it.
Thank you very much, Maria. Bert?
Okay, I did everything Maria did, I think. And more, right? And move on. All right, I am going to do my exit speech, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind.
I would be honored to listen.
I will start the processional as we move on, but let me take off my glasses so I can actually read what I read. First of all, I have a top 10 list, so I'm going to do my top 10 thank you, so just bear with me, going to read through this. And of course, at the top of my list is my wonderful wife Linda, who's here in the audience tonight. And a lot of people ask me, why don't you bring her to a lot of different events? And I basically say, she is probably a nicer person than I, and she would probably get the more attention, so I like to keep the attention on myself when I'm at these events representing the city. And also, she is a critical care nurse, so if you need to be life-saving, she will do it. I'll save you money, she'll save your life, so that's kind of how our marriage works. Yeah, we're a good team on that, so, but thank you, honey, for coming here and allowing me to do what I'm doing for the last nine years. And also, my boys Brett and Reed. Brett is up at UNF in Jacksonville, I think he's watching right now on video, so I want to thank my boys, because they were really an integral part of me getting involved in the city and moving back here, and I envy them, those two boys, because they'll have one thing that I will never have, and I thought about this today, the name of City of Palm Beach Gardens will be on their birth certificate. And not many people, you know, that I know have that, because we're all kind of transplants, so they should cherish that. Hopefully they'll move back to the city and do a lot of good things in the future, and thanks for not getting in trouble the last nine years with the police, chief. No calls in the middle of the night from my two boys, so I'm very thankful for that, and I certainly appreciate it. Next, I'd like really to thank the good Lord, hate to put you number two, but sorry, the wife's always first. My late mother Rosalie and my mother-in-law Evelyn, who recently joined them in heaven, really for keeping an eye on me to make sure that every day I respected the privilege of serving you. Next, I'd like to thank my dad, who celebrated his 91st birthday last month, a WWII veteran, enlisted at 18, welcome to the Battle of the Bulge. Here you go, son, good luck. And he came back, thank God, and I'm around because of him. In 1968, he was the last of our family to leave New York and move to South Florida, but thankfully, Dad liked what he saw after getting off the Florida Turnpike here on PGA Boulevard. Almost 50 years later, our family could not be more satisfied with his decision. And the funny part is, is most of our family had moved to Miami from New York, and in the coming years over time, they actually moved to northern Palm Beach County over the years and joined us, so Dad made the right decision for our entire family, so thank you, Dad, for that. Also, special thanks to the rest of my family support system, including my brother Ray, his wife Laura, my father-in-law Al, and my sister-in-law Yvonne, just great people in my life who have helped me get to this point. Okay, enough of the family. I'm good. Let's get to the serious business now. My employer, Valley National Bank, and the president of our bank holding company, Rudy Shup. Rudy has always been a big supporter of volunteer service and community involvement. Joining his team seven years ago was the second-best personal decision that I have ever made in my life, first, obviously, being my wife Linda, because Rudy allowed me the necessary time and resources to fulfill my duties as your representative. This is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week commitment, and my goal was to never give you anything less. Special thanks to Mayor Russo's here tonight, Mayor Javelin, Mayor Levy, for your initial patience and guidance in working with me and respecting my opinions and positions. It was a little rough at the start, but listening to you and learning how to deal with each subject while representing our residents and maintaining the integrity of our city allowed me the opportunity to get comfortable with my decision-making process. Thank you for that, I really do appreciate it. Mayor Tinsley, you have done a tremendous job this year in dealing with a variety of subjects and representing our city wherever, whenever you were needed, knowing all along there was a fixed timeframe to your leadership. You did a great job, and I'm proud to serve with you. To Carl and Maria and the three new future council members to be elected, you will be given the keys to the Cadillac. I was going to say Ferrari, but I didn't want to get too cocky, so we'll go with the American car, the Cadillac. As I know there are more good ideas and decisions to come, best wishes for a positive experience and successful outcomes, as I enjoyed working up here. Thanks to our city manager, Ron Ferris, our city attorney, Max Lohman, our city clerk, Patricia Snyder, our senior management team, the public safety divisions, and all of our city employees, some 500 strong. I might not know all of your names, but I've always appreciated the jobs that you do as the daily face of our city. Keep up the great work, as new projects and residents will be coming, and your professionalism and continued dedication will be our critical to our future success. City relationships, the, what? Was that strategy? Thanks for breaking up the monotony there. The PGA Corridor, the Palm Beach North Chamber, all the business owners and their representatives, thank you for working with our staff and understanding what projects would be acceptable to the vision of our city while still focusing on preserving the values and services provided to our existing residents. In addition, a special thanks to all the personal friendships that I've made and the ongoing support that I receive from all around this city. Also, thanks to my peeps on the Budget Oversight Committee, as well as all the advisory board members that helped make this such a great city. I've always felt these committees were the best way to get involved, learn about particular issues, and present solutions that would benefit our entire city. My seven years on the Recreation Advisory Board, working with Charlotte Przynski, my friend, got me engaged and truly made me a better-informed candidate and councilperson. And last but not least, I would like to express my sincere thanks to all the residents of Palm Beach Gardens. You have bestowed upon me a tremendous honor to represent you without questioning my desire, commitment to the job, or tremendous passion for this city. In the beginning, I asked you for a decade to make a difference, and I leave here truly with no regrets. We have accomplished so many things together and positioned our city for a successful journey into the future. Thank you, and may God continue to bless all of you and our great city. Thank you.
I know it's going to be tough, Eric, but you're next.
That was great. Thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
It's been a real privilege to serve with all of you guys. You know, I'm a very lucky man, a very smart guy, and you know who you are, that I respect a lot, once told me that luck is not necessarily random. Luck is being prepared for when opportunity presents itself and then being able to take advantage of it. 25 years ago, I found myself with the opportunity to run for this office. You might say I was lucky, but in truth, all my life up to then had prepared me to take advantage of that unique moment. However, I was lucky, lucky to have so many good friends who supported me over all these years, people who without their support, I could not have accomplished any success in public office. I was also blessed to have a wonderful family, my wife Abby and my two children, Matthew and Rachel, who encouraged me and made sacrifices to help me along the way, who have given me valuable advice and helped me stay grounded in a profession that can and will, go to your head if you don't, be careful. I arrived in Palm Beach Gardens 30 years ago, when this little city was hardly a city. The promise was there, but it was far from being fulfilled. PGA National and Frenchman's Creek, the only so-called gated communities in this area, were in the early stages of development, and the Gardens Mall was still on the drawing boards. I-95 ended at PGA Boulevard, and there was only one restaurant and one pub in town. The MacArthur Foundation controlled all the land in and around the city, and Old City Hall was perched on a man-made hill over the police station on Burns Road, which housed 75 men and women and one restroom. This is where we began 30 years ago, and look where we are today. We have grown tremendously, and unless you were here for all that growth, if you were magically transported back 30 years, you might not recognize where we came from. Took a lot of hard work and planning with a lot of expertise from a lot of talented people to get where we are today. People like Joe Russo, who I had the good fortune of having served with for more than 25 years right up here. People like David Clark, Linda Monroe, David Levy, Hal Valache, Annie Delgado, and Carl Sabatello, and of course Bert Primoroso and our mayor, Marcy Tinsley, who are retiring with me here today. These people have contributed their time, their efforts, and their unique talents to help guide this wonderful city in the past. I'm truly hopeful that the next generation of the city council members, along with Maria and Carl, will continue to care for and guide this city into the future. But I want to give credit to the staff who run this great city day to day. You make it work. You give it life. You are some of the finest people I have ever had the privilege of working with in my lifetime. I can honestly say that without a leader like our manager, Ron Ferris, this city wouldn't be the great city it is today. Ron, you've assembled a remarkably talented staff, and if I tried to name them all, and there are so many of them, I might forget someone, so I'm not going to mention names, but all I want to do is thank you for all your support over the past 25 years. Thank you for your knowledge, thank you for your expertise, your professionalism, and yes, your friendship. I'm not saying goodbye, because I'm not leaving the city, but this is my last opportunity to say it from up here, so thank you all from the bottom of my heart, and God bless you all. Thank you.
We still have half a box of Kleenex. We're good to go. I'm going to close here, and again, this is very tough for us, but the last six and a half years have really been a whirlwind of fun, laughter, camaraderie, as you see up here, so many great memories, but there were some times when we couldn't sleep because we were thinking about the tough decisions that we had to face, how we were going to affect many people that we work with, the businesses, the residents that we protect. I started my tenure during a recession, but I can tell you that I'm very proud of every decision that I've made. However, no matter what decision we faced, I knew we had the best team, and together, those decisions became the foundation for our city's future. We made many decisions up here, and we spent a lot of time together, kind of like the movie. We're kind of like our own little breakfast club up here. We had the banker, Big Bob, over here, which I can say that because I'm five foot two, the teacher, David, with his crazy rock lessons, remember that? We had Eric and his love for art, culture, Joe, another CPA, and then me, the planner. Although we are all very, very different, we share one common thread, which was the love of our city, the staff and all of the people and the love for the businesses within. I want to thank each and every member of staff. It is you that make our jobs look so easy. Without you, our city would not be the success that it is today. The hardest part, I think, is saying goodbye to all of you. However, I am very confident that you all, including our new council members and the future ones, will ensure the future success of our city going forward. And I, like you guys, I can't name everybody, I've worked with so many people, I love you all, but I will name a few that we've worked with. Alan, I've never met anyone that can take a subject like the budget and make it look so exciting in a presentation. I appreciate your patience when working with me to help me understand your world of finance. You and your entire team are awesome. Natalie, you and I have very strong personalities, but it didn't take me long to realize that we had so much in common and we really think alike in so many ways. Your strength and your intelligence has really brought our city into the future in a very thoughtful way, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with you and your entire team. Chief Step, your leadership skills are second to none. You've had to face some very tough situations in the last couple of years, and you did it with such honor and such integrity. I'm so honored to have been able to work with you and your entire department. Chief Brier, it's been such an honor working with you as well, you and your department, your entire team. Every time I've asked for some help, no matter what it is, you've always stepped up and you've exceeded my expectations. Ron, my seat had a very tough stigma to it when I began. I knew that I had to earn some trust when I started here. It didn't take me long, though, to learn that underneath your tough shell, there was a big soft heart in there. Hey, this is my, I'm telling you all right now. And I know in that big soft heart, you have our city's name written all over it. It has been a pleasure working with you. You have really taught me a lot over the years, strong management skills, tenderness when it comes to children, and that provides the best contrast for a great leader, so thank you for your patience and for your dedication. Laura, Christie, Charlotte, although recreation is in your job title, I know it is not always fun, although you make it look very easy. You have an amazing, dedicated team. You make our big city feel like a nice, small hometown community, and it's been a lot of fun working with you. Keeping the council together, I know, is like herding cats, and you do it with such ease and grace. We really appreciate all you do, and it's been an absolute honor working with you guys. Patty, Ray, Kenthia, Alicia, you have been very helpful in keeping my calendar organized, me organized. I appreciate the years of reminders, do your gift disclosure, do your financial disclosure. I always said, I was joking, this is a joke, but I've always said to Patty, I am not built for jail, and she has helped keep me in a good way, so I, just a joke, people. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. I'm going to miss our little chats, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with all of you. And of course, I want to thank my family. A little pause.
That's why I did it first.
Get it over with. I know. It's not easy being the first husband, let me tell you. Wondering why it takes me 50 minutes to go into Publix to get a gallon of milk? Yep. Right. Knowing the truth, but not reading it in the Palm Beach Post, or listening to your opponents, or the public bash your wife is not easy. My daughter was in middle school when I started, and now she's in college. She's had to share her mom with the city, which sometimes is not easy. She's also had to learn the good, the bad, and the ugly about politics, and she's done that very, very well. And my mom, who's sitting right there, hi, Mom. They not only supported me, but they became the petition gatherer for David, Eric, Joe, Bert, all of us, remember that? Every Green Market, they kept the newspaper, every single newspaper article for all of us, have come to, my mom and dad have come to all the events. They carpooled my daughter when I couldn't, they walked my dog when I was here, and I couldn't have done that and represented my city without them. They are my rock, and Ron, you can blame my persistency and stubbornness to them. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Herb Kahler, Carl Karp, Clear Lake Executive Suites, and that entire team, which is my other job, by the way. They have been so supportive, not just supportive of me, but supporting me and allowing me the time to be away from the office there, my other office, to be here to serve my city. And I think the best part of this job, in my opinion, has been the so many people that I've had the honor to represent. I want to thank all of our community friends, the PGA Corridor, the Chamber, all of the business owners that have been so super supportive over the years. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And in closing, the shared foundation of our communities, our colleagues, the teamwork, a lifetime of memories will live on forever in the mortar and in the future success of our city. And for all of us here, as we turn the next corner in our lives, we'll always remember the honor and the privilege it's been to help build this foundation together. I did it without crying. And if anyone needs Kleenex, it's all up here, I'll share. Do you want to do a, do you want to do a minute? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on now, and sorry that took so long. We're going to move on to comments from the public. I know, right. We're going to move on to the comments from the public, and I do have a few cards up here. We're going to start with Joe Russo. Mayor Joe Russo, it doesn't say, does it say? I have two of them, so I guess it's the mayor, Joe Russo.
Well, guys, that was awesome. You did a great job. I came tonight because as a resident, I wanted to thank you for the past year, and as a fellow council member, I wanted to thank you for all the years I served with you. You know, we were very fortunate on this city to have such great city council people. And Bert, you made a comment about your son coming back. When I started, there was no chance that any of the kids could come back here because we had no jobs for them. Today, with the hard work we did on this council, we did. We now have jobs for them. Eric, I loved serving with you all those years. We were the senior members. I'll tell you, Bert, you made a comment about, you know, how much we helped you. Let me tell you something, the best excitement I ever got, okay, was seeing the council members develop. And when you took over as mayor, you were ready, and you did a phenomenal job. And Marcy, you were absolutely awesome. You know, I remember you asked me in the beginning, what do I need to do? How do I need to do it? And I said a few things to you, and I told you what you needed to do. Let me just say this to you, sometimes, no matter what you tell the people, they still can't do it. You went far above and beyond. I get so excited every time I listen to you in a meeting, and you've done a phenomenal job as mayor, and you should be very proud of that, and I thank you as a resident for being my mayor. So, like I said last year, and the good news is, I've attended, I don't know, five, six, it seems like 100 of these candidate forums by now, and the good news is, is everybody seems to be nice to each other, and that's the most important thing, because as you well know, you know, you can share different opinions on things, as long as you're united on the one opinion, and that is making this city the best it could be. And that's what we always did. Even though we differed in opinions on certain issues, we always were united on making Palm Beach Gardens the best it could be. So, in my closing, I'd like to, like I told the new council members, anytime they had a question, Maria and Carl, you can pick up a phone and call me. I will tell the three of you, as you go through your withdrawal, if you'd like to pick up the phone and call me, I'd be glad to help, because I'm knowing a little bit of what to do. So, thanks again, and congratulations to you all. You should be all proud of the job you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tom Carnes? Next is Tom Carnes.
Yes? You know, it seems like someone got a look at my notes here. Oh, I'm here tonight, Tom Carnes, 3101 PGA Boulevard. I'm here tonight representing, at least in part, the PGA Corridor Association, but I'm also representing myself, and I just want to say what a pleasure it has been to work with you. been to, to work with all of you. It really has. I think the, the, uh, council and the, and the business community have, have done great things together. It, it, uh, what a, what a great job you've done. You hired Ron, or at least you, you kept Ron on, and he has been the, I think, the glue that has really held the city together, and hopefully he'll be here for many more years and, and continue to keep it together. He's hired the, the best, uh, leaders and, and staff, and it's just been great. You've kept the taxes low for all. You've overseen a lot of phenomenal growth, a lot of quality growth, which has protected the tax base and really helped out everyone that lives here. No one could have envisioned what a great place we've grown to become. Eric, I remember 30 years ago, I was the person looking over those plans before we broke ground on, uh, on the mall down the street. And, and remember flying in helicopters up I-95 to make sure it was gonna be done before the mall opened, because a couple of contractors that were building the bridges had, had gone broke, so we had to line up new contractors to, to come in and finish that. But it's been a, a great balance between the residential community, the business community, and, and the city, and I want to thank you for that. The challenge for the incoming council is to stay the course under Ron's, under Ron's management. Preserve and protect the assets the city has acquired. Uh, I hope you all will continue to be involved in the city. It's been, uh, great to work with you, and I know everyone in the city would, would, be, be very happy to continue working with you. Best wishes in your future endeavors. We look forward to seeing you around town, on the golf courses, and in the Green Market. Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll have plenty of time to do that now.[724.16][724.16](laughter) (applause) Okay, next will be Joe Russo Jr. And so, that's what it says on the card.
Sorry, I forgot the other one was here.[741.54][741.54](laughter) Joe Russo, 4907 Midtown Lane, Palm Beach Gardens. Uh, I have a brief rule in life I try to abide by, and that's never be the smartest person in the room. Always be around people smarter than yourself that you can learn from. And nowhere else has that been more true than in these chambers, watching you all and being around such fantastic leaders and fantastic staff. Uh, growing up in this town, as people probably heard me a, a lot the last few weeks talk about it, uh, i, i, it's been a very amazing experience, uh, to see so much happen under the leadership of this council. And, uh, you know, I, I just have to, to generally thank you all. But, uh, you know, specifically, Bert, uh, the other Italian guy with the mustache, uh, uh, your, your jovial nature, your, your brilliance, uh, your absolute just class has been a great example. And I always find myself thinking, wow, finally, somebody said that one thing I was thinking. And it's just been an absolute honor to call you my mayor and my councilman over the years. Marcy, I, I remember when you were first up there. I don't remember when everyone first got up there. I, I was about two, I think, when Eric got up there. But, um, I, I've seen you grow into a, from a citizen to a council member to a mayor, and it makes me so proud to call you a friend and to call you my mayor. Eric, the mayor of the Green Market, mayor of our city, um, I remember so many, so many little instances growing up around you. Uh, by the way, best brownie recipe ever, this guy. Talk to him. But, uh, you helped build this city. You helped shape the future of this city and impart a little bit of my life. I must thank you all for doing such a great part of your lives, dedicating so much to this city, to the lives of those around you, and to the public service. I thank you all, and thank you so much. Thank you.[873.43][873.43](applause)
Thank you. And the last card that I have is one of our special, special people here, Joan Elias. And welcome back, we're so happy to see you.
Thank you, Marcy. Joan Elias, 1009 Diamond Edway. I broke my record of attending almost every city council meeting for the past 23-plus years, when I broke my back in October. And it's, I would never have missed this meeting. And it's good to see everybody and hear about memories that we all have. I've had memories of attending these meetings, and as I was saying, as I was walking in, how beautiful the city hall is, and now it needs renovation, and it does, because it's been here a long time. But, we certainly don't want it to reach the point that the old city hall was, because if the toilet flushed, the po, police department flooded. So, all the police wore boots. You couldn't get into the bathrooms because there were so many file cabinets. So, thank God, you're going to do something to make sure that this building does not reach the state that the last one was in. It's a very emotional evening for me, as it was this time last year, when we all sat here and remembered the wonderful things that, and experiences we had with Joe. Now, there are three of you that have been on the council, have served on advisory boards long before you got on the council, and given a lot of your life to this city. And first and foremost, we thank the families of Marcy and Bert and Eric for giving your loved ones to the city for these many, many years. I've known Eric the longest, because I remember the first time I went to a council meeting, I thought, who is that guy who keeps closing his eyes? And, and Eric was working, at that time, he had his deli and was working, and some of the meetings, a lot of us were closing our eyes. I thank you all, and Eric, the other councils you have been in, for what you have done to make this city what it is. We have almost 50% green space, and almost all of the areas have been built. I remember the first thing I, meeting I went to for the city was the final report on the vision. There was a vision task force made up of businesspeople, staff, and citizens. And if anybody can find that book, you'll find out that most of the developments that we have in this city were designated. It was determined that those areas along Central Boulevard and PGA, et cetera, were designated for exactly what they have turned out to be. And I think that is very remarkable, because usually people set goals and never reach them. It's going to be a very different city council, because we will have more new board members than we have had in a long time. I will still be here and keep an eye on you, because I have more history than most of the people in this room. Ron, thank God they hired you, and you hired a staff that has made this city what it is today. Marcy, Bert, and Eric, you and your past board members have set the bar very, very high to keep this city what it is today, and we all thank you. And nobody loves this city more than Eric. And I know you're still gonna be around, because you and I are gonna sit here and kibitz.[1181.36][1181.36](laughter) Thank you.[1184.04][1184.04](applause)
Thank you so much, Joanie. We love you. Okay, that was all that I have for cards, so we are going to move on to the city manager report.
I think I must give the city manager report tonight, and we'll move on, I'll save it for later.
Okay, um, then we're gonna move to the consent agenda.
Move consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Yeah, we did it.
Bye, Mom. Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearings. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 2, 2017, second reading and adoption, Trevy Isles rezoning. Ordinance 1, 2017, Trevy Isles PUD. Ordinance 9, 2017, second reading and adoption, Gardens Corporate Center Plan Unit Development PUD, Resolution 20, 2017. Amending the Gardens Corporate Center Plan Unit Development, Resolution 27, 21, 2017, Ballin Isles Community Associate, Association Plan Community Development, PCD Amendment. Ordinance 12, 2017, First Reading Business Center at the Gardens, Resolution 24, 2017. Frenchman's Reserve, PCD, Resolution 23, 2017. Frenchman's Reserve Clubhouse, Resolution 30, 2017. Art in Public Places, Gardens Corporate Center. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in official city file on this application, and any documents presented during the hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testified tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and the other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the following cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, Patty. We're gonna start with ordinance 8, 2016. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 8, 2016. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending its comprehensive development plan to adopt evaluation and appraisal review, EAR-based amendments pursuant to Section 163.3191 Florida statutes. Providing for a comprehensive update to all elements affecting the pagination in each amended element, providing that the text as amended or revised shall be substituted for and replaced in full the existing text in all amended elements. Providing for an update to all maps in the comprehensive plan map series. Providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency. Providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you, Patty. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Um, I know that there's been a few minor changes, so would you please just go over the changes? We don't need a full presentation, right, you guys? It's a second reading.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Natalie Crowley, Director of Planning and Zoning. There have been no major changes since first reading. After the first reading, the petition was submitted to the State Department of Economic Opportunity. We received comments from them, which were addressed. Primarily, we were responding to their request to use the latest flood data, which wasn't simply, it simply wasn't available at the time of when we were gathering our data and analysis. So, we adjusted our data accordingly. It is the same data that relates to the flood zones, which actually significantly reduces the amount of properties in the city within a flood zone. So, we corrected that, that was not a major change, and we adjusted the future land use map to reflect the 2030, 2030 date that they had requested. And that is essentially a summary of the changes that we, we did. They are not major in nature, but I'm happy to go into more detail if the council desires.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie or would like any more detail in regards to the minor changes or, or the, um, ordinance at all? Nope? Eric, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, I do not have any cards on this or anyone wishing to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a council vote in or discussion.
Madam Chair. Sorry. Madam Chair. Uh, move ordinance 8, 2016 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance 1, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 1, 2017. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes. Specifically, Section 163.3184, subsequent to Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPMA-14-07-000018, which provides for an amendment to the future land use map in order to change the land use designation on 12.50 acres in size, more or less, from residential low RL to residential medium RM, providing a notation on the future land use map pertaining to the permitted land use density to be 50 units related to the subject property, which is located on the north side of Hood Road, immediately west of Florida's Turnpike, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes. Providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO. Providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you, Patty. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I know it's second reading. Does anybody want to see the presentation, or have there been any changes?
There have been no changes since first reading.
Does anybody want to see the presentation again? Carl?
I'm free here, though.
Carl, you, you good?
I'm comfortable.
You're comfortable?
Yeah.
Everybody, okay. We're gonna let you off easy this time.[1634.54][1634.54](laughter) There's been no changes, and we don't need a presentation again. Um, I do not have any, unless, staff, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay. And I don't have any cards on this item or anyone wishing to speak, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to a council discussion in or vote.
Madam Chair, move ordinance 1, 2017 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, if I could have a second, I wanted to thank staff and, uh, everyone that's been involved in this petition. This was filed in 2014, so it's been a long time coming, and the applicant appreciates very much all the support that they've received. I also wanted to thank you for your service. I'm gonna have to make this short. I've been around for a long time, and I've seen a lot of council people come and go over the last 39 years, and I have not seen such dedication that the three of you has shown, uh, to this city. And I'm proud and honored to have had the opportunity to work with you and that I can call you my friends. I look forward to seeing you out as civilians. Thanks.[1716.33][1716.33](laughter)
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, and thank you for your support. And we do, we are gonna move on to ordinance 2, which is also Trevy. Um, ordinance 2, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2, 2017. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property, such property being comprised of 12.50 acres in size, more or less, and located on the north side of Hood Road, immediately west of Florida's Turnpike. Providing that the parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from residential low density to District RL2 to plan unit development with a residential medium RM underlying zoning. Providing that the zoning map of the city of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly. Providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution 1, 2017 is a companion item to ordinance 2, 2017, and will require council action. Resolution 1, 2017, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a plan unit development PUD site plan to allow the development of a 50-town home residential subdivision called Trevy Isle PUD, which is located on the north side of Hood Road, immediately west of Florida's Turnpike, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you Patty, I'm going to open the public hearing for ordinance two, 2017, and ask for any ex parte's.
None.
None.
Okay, none for me as well. And there obviously hasn't been any changes, I'm assuming. We don't need a presentat-, does anybody want a presentation before I say we don't need one?
Actually, let me just go back for a second. Ex parte since the last time we read this or ex parte since the beginning of time?
We'll incorporate for the record any ex parte disclosures from the previous hearing.
None, thank you.
So none, so to clarify, no ex parte's since the last meeting?
Correct.
And any that were from the first will be carried over to this, to this one. Okay? So we've said we don't need a presentation and staff is not going to add any additional comments. I do not have any cards for this item as well, so I'm going to close the hearing and bring it back for a council discussion in or a vote.
Madam Chair, move ordinance two, 2017, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries five to zero. And now you've already read resolution one, 2017, so I'm going to open the public hearing for that one. And Bert thinks I'm not banging the gavel loud enough, so I'll do it louder next time. Okay, I'm going to ask for any ex parte's or we're going to carry the ex parte's from the last meeting over to this meeting if that's okay?
Carryover.
And none. We don't need a presentation and I don't have any cards on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to bring it back for a coun-, hold on. And I'm going to bring it back for council discussion in or a vote. Now everyone's awake, okay?
Madam Chair, move resolution one, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Good luck, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Now we're going to move on to ordinance seven. Would the clerk please read the title?
Oh boy.
Come on, do it live.
No. Give her a break.
This is the time for anyone to use the restroom if they need to.
Ordinance seven, 2017. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending chapter 78 land development regulations. At table of contents, Article six, nonconformities as revised for internal consistency. At section 78-49, amendments to approved development orders by repealing subsection B1A and readopting same as revised. At section 78-54, public notice by repealing subsection B and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-75, adopted levels of service by repealing table seven, subsection F, and table eight and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by repealing section 78-114, occupational licenses in its entirety and reserving same for future legislation. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-144, civic and institutional zoning district regulations by repealing table 11 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-147, CG1, general commercial district by repealing subsection D2 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-159, permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses and prohibited uses by repealing subsections J5C2, J5D, and J26 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-182, lighting regulations by repealing table one with notes and readopting same as revised. Amending section 78-186, yards by repealing subsection B3 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-188, garage, yard, and rummage sales by repealing subsection C and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-261, art in public places requirements at subsection C1B and C2 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-263, waiver of requirements by repealing the section in its entirety and readopting new section 78-263 entitled definitions of art as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-273, nonconforming signs by repealing subsections A and B and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-285, permitted signs by repealing table 24 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by repealing section 78-303, approval required and readopting same as revised. Amending chapter 78 at section 78-313, minimum landscape requirements for nonresidential development by repealing subsection F and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-318, prohibited plants and invasive non-native plants by repealing table 29 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-344, construction and maintenance by repealing sections EL1, L1A, L1B, L1C, L4, and table 32 with notes and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-345, number of parking spaces required by repealing subsection D1 and table 33 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by adopting new section 78-347 to be entitled valet parking. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-362, size and location of loading spaces by repealing subsections A and B3 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-378, dumpsters by repealing subsection B2G and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at subdivision four by repealing the title and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by repealing section 78-391, parking and storage of commercial vehicles, boats, buses, trailers, trucks, and recreational vehicles and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by adopting new section 78-392 to be entitled parking and storage of portable storage units. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-396, valid nonconforming uses by repealing subsection C and C3 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 by repealing section 78-661, performance standards at subsection B2 and readopting same as revised. Further amending chapter 78 at section 78-751, definitions by repealing the definitions of club or lodge, commercial vehicle, community residential home type two, planned community district, planned development, and readopting same as revised. And by adopting new definitions for portable storage unit, providing that each and every other section and subsection of chapter 78 land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All right. Thank you Patty. And that was a new, a different recording from the last one. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing and I know there's been some changes, so if you don't mind, if you would please go over those with us.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, Natalie Crowley, Director of Planning and Zoning. There have been some changes, with the council's permission, I would like to focus exclusively on those changes.
Please.
Okay, thank you very much. So really since first reading, there have been, most of the changes, most of the changes have been related to valet parking. There was one minor change that was included that provided the city engineered the discretion to provide wheel stops in grass parking area. This discretion already existed, so this change provides internal consistency with our existing code, but we were fine including that additional comment. So we made that minor modification. And the rest of the changes really resulted from some of the concerns that we had received from the PGA Corridor Association. And those concerns were, we started in those discussions prior to first reading and we had received the letter from them prior to first reading and we did in fact meet with them. It was a good meeting, we had a much better understanding of what some of those concerns were, and we had an opportunity to really go through site by site and review how the proposed legislation impacted, truly impacted each of the individual property owners. We also discussed the proposed legislation internally and many of the department heads reviewed the proposed legislation and we all agreed by far, our primary goal and objective in the valet parking legislation was life safety. We really wanted to address primarily the life safety issues and we were willing to compromise on some of the other provisions that were very important to the business community. So those changes that you see are presented before you, they're in the packets. And really what they did is they provided a little bit of flexibility on the blockage of driveways and drive aisles in those unique circumstances where fire was still comfortable and police was still comfortable and engineering in ensuring that life safety issues were maintained. And so as you can see in subsection A, driveways and drive aisles are, they're not removed, they're simply moved to subsection C, which allows for the valet parking area to be clear of driveways, which requires, excuse me, the parking areas to be clear of driveways and drive aisles. And the valet parking shall not modify the access or circulation, but still provides the city a little bit of discretion and flexibility through the permitting process to review those unique circumstances where there may be a very small drive aisle that could be safely blocked. Certainly, any blockage of ADA parking spaces, parking spaces or ramps, fire lanes, not acceptable. There is no flexibility in that provision, which you can see in subsection A. We were also comfortable increasing the percentage of the valet from 30 to 60. We did understand that that was very important to many of the business owners and for the functionality of their overall centers. And we were comfortable because primarily that was, like I said, the life safety issues were really the first objective in looking at the proposed legislation. We also took a little bit of a closer look at some of the follow, the additional language that required certain elements to be included in the permit and we really just tried to keep it as simple as possible. So we really just tried to take some of the, I don't want to be too general, but some of the fluff out and we wanted to make it a little bit more streamlined and a little bit more simple. So that's what we did. And buffering and screening, that's already addressed in our landscape code, so that was just duplicative. We did discuss the valet parking permit and I think the idea was that we wanted to make it as streamlined as possible. We did not want to create a lot of red tape here. We really just wanted to ensure that we had a really solid enforcement mechanism to be able to give the business owners the chance to submit a permit with all of their information. We structured the permit where it could be online. We structured the permit where there would be no fee. We structured the permit where there would additionally be changes that would be allowed to occur online, again with no fee. And we also structured it so that it was a one-time permit and only changes as they are necessary would trigger the modification. The review team who would touch this permit would be police, fire, engineering, and planning. And due to the one to two-page maximum size of the permit, we estimated the average review time for this to be about two to three working days. And this was well received along with the other changes that were sent and presented just now to the Corridor Association. We received many positive comments and appreciation back from them. We did send the actual specific verbiage so that they could see that. We did not change the effective date, the effective date still is October 1, but I do want to emphasize since there was some discussion the last council meeting that we do have tools right now that we can address through our Florida Fire and Prevention Code that prohibits the blockage of any drive aisles that would cause a life safety issue and any ADA spaces that would be blocked and certainly any fire lanes. So we do have tools that we can use now, really what this permitting process and what this does in codification of the LDRs, it really strengthens that language and it allows us to be able to coordinate with the property owners and it provides for better management. So it'll, the effective date of October also allows us to get the word out, to be able to place this information on the website and allow the affected property owners time to prepare. And with that, there are no other changes with ordinance seven, 2017. A big appreciation for all the staff who worked on this, on this ordinance. It was a massive one and all the department heads and all the DRC team worked really hard on this. So thank you for everybody who helped with this. And with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance seven, 2017. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie. Does anybody have any questions for her?
Actually, Natalie, I do have one question. To clarify, is it the business owner that's submitting the permit or is it the property owner that's submitting the permit? Because in some instances, you know, the businesses are renting from the property owner.
It could be, it could be either. If the business owner chooses to submit the permit, the consent of the property owner would be required on the permit. So, but the property owner in all likelihood would be the one submitting in most cases.
And you've spoken with several of the property owners that have multiple restaurants and whatnot and they're, we all got, we got good feedback.
Yes, you know, really the representatives from the PGA Corridor, Corridor Association really do bring that representation of some of the larger property owners and they, and some of the property owners themselves did have a chance to look at that and we did receive positive feedback from most everybody. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Natalie? You're welcome to make it if you want.
Well, it's up to us to rely on the staff, so as far as, as long as the chief are both comfortable with this and we're going to monitor this throughout the time, then I'm comfortable because I know I kind of came about it a little bit aggressive because when I'm out and about, you can't even move. So, you know, I appreciate us compromising with the business, especially as people as important as the PGA Corridor. And it's, it was a good compromise and I think it'll be good and I hope the chiefs are comfortable with it and the city manager, and if they are, then I am. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? We got the thumbs up from this end as far as compromising and being comfortable with it. So I do have one card on this. I'm going to call you up, Catherine Gettinger.
For the record, Catherine Gettinger, 4250 Hickory Drive. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for your service. You have all been very responsive when I email you with my questions and issues with stuff and very kind and helpful and you'll be missed. Thank you. So the wheel stops, I appreciate that there's a caveat there, but I would just love to strike the wheel stops part because I, I don't like wheel stops. My, my car gets stuck on them when I back up. I think on grass, we can figure out where parking spots are without a wheel stop. And I just wanted to point out that there aren't wheel stops at Publix and the fire trucks kind of park across a couple of parking spots. If there were wheel stops there, that would be an issue for them, they would take up more parking spots. And you know, we, we have a parking shortage sometimes. And I also wanted to point out that there are no wheel stops in the parking lot here at City Hall. So just, wheel stops are unnecessary. And they're expensive. When I looked online, they're 30 to 80 dollars apiece. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And an applicant is able to ask for a waiver and also our city engineer is able to work with them, but unfortunately, and I know they are sometimes tripping hazards in certain places, but wheel stops are required for safety measures and there's been more often not where they are needed for, for safety purposes. And it's up to us to protect our city and our, the developments within it. So, but I appreciate your comments and, and I guess that's the only comment card that I have for this item. So I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a council discussion in or a vote.
Madam Chair, move ordinance seven, 2017, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to ordinance eight, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance eight, 2017. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending chapter 79 property maintenance standards. Amending the title of section 79-4 code enforcement special master. Alternative means of enforcement, further amending section 79-4 in order to provide internal consistency with the city code of ordinances. Further amending section 79-5 maintenance and appearance standards for all structures and landscaping in order to amend the regulations regarding maintenance and appearance standards for all structures and landscaping within the city. for all structures and landscaping within the city. And amending the title of Section 79-6, responsibilities of owners and operators of dwellings, hotel units and rooming houses for let. Further amending Section 79-6 in order to provide internal consistency with the City Code of ordinances, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing. And I know it's second reading. Does anybody, were there any changes? Let's start with that.
There were no changes.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody wish to see the presentation again?
No.
Not on that side? Nobody on this side? Okay. So you're off the hook. But don't go away, just in case, because we do have one card on this item. So I'm going to ask that person to come up. Catherine Gettinger. One day I'll get it right. Sorry.
Sorry. Catherine Gettinger, 4250 Hickory Drive. It's again, it's about parking on the grass, which is good. I don't want to have a great big driveway instead of a yard. I like to park on my grass once in a while. My neighbor, two doors down, resurfaced his driveway and parked on the grass for a week, which would be against the rules with this, right? I have bongo at my house once a year, eleven cars. We can't park on the street. We need to park in the grass. And when we have a holiday party, same thing. I also have neighbors who are police officers with a boat and a camper. Would they need to screen their vehicles because they're work vehicles? And what about other people with work vehicles and a boat or camper? Thank you.
It's overnight.
Okay. That was the last comment card that I have on this. And just in response, I hear you, I understand, I believe, and if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's no overnight parking in the grass. And I can honestly say that our police department is extremely fair when it comes to this. The swales are meant for drainage and when it's filled with cars and debris and stuff, whatever the case may be, it blocks the drainage for not only your house or your property, but for the entire street, obviously depending on where you are on the street. So unfortunately, we do have to protect everybody in the neighborhood, but as I said, our police department is extremely fair. If they see that there's a party, they're not going to go ticket everybody, I'm assuming. They're going to obviously know that there is a party going on and be very thoughtful about who they, who they ticket. And if they see something consistently happening, constant parking overnight, overnight, overnight in the same spot, or they get calls from neighbors where there's a nuisance, then of course they're going to come and they're going to do what they can to protect the entire neighborhood. And if I'm wrong in that, please state your piece now. Okay. Okay. So that's it. Am I correct? It's overnight parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't have anybody else speaking on this topic, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to a council discussion and/or a vote.
Madam Chair, move Ordinance 8, 2017 on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Now we're going to move on to Ordinance 9, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 9, 2017. An ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, repealing Ordinance 42, 2001, which amended the Gardens Corporate Center Plan Unit Development (PUD), formerly known as the Medical Mall (PUD), located at the northeast corner of the intersection of PGA Boulevard and alternate A1A by repealing all previously imposed conditions of approval and waivers for Phase 2 and transferring two previously approved waivers related to Phase 1 to Resolution 20, 2017, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution 20 is a companion item to Ordinance 9, 2017 and will require council action. Resolution 20, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an application from Gardens Corporate Center (LLC) to amend the Gardens Corporate Center Plan Unit Development (PUD) site plan to allow two professional office buildings consisting of 223,943 square feet and a three-story parking garage on Phase 2 of the PUD. The site is located on the northeast corner of PGA Boulevard, PGA bypass and alternate A1A and is approximately 15.64 acres within the Regional Center Plan Community Development (PCD), providing conditions of approval, transferring two waivers related to Phase 1, approving a new waiver, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Patty. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to ask for any ex parte's.
Yes, I have spoken, spoken with Nadir over the phone. We did have a small presentation before, which carried over, but recently I've had a phone conversation.
I'm sorry, your mic is not on.
Oh, sorry. If we're carrying over the ex parte from last time with the small presentation, but I have also spoken with the applicant over the phone recently.
Okay.
Likewise, I've spoken with the applicant over the phone.
Wonderful.
None from me since the last meeting?
None.
And, excuse me, none since the last meeting, but we'll carry them over, like we said. Okay. Has there been any changes on this one since the last? None? No changes since the last?
No. Dodie Glass for the applicant. No, there's been no changes.
Okay. Does anybody want to see the presentation again? It is second reading for Ordinance 9.
No.
And I know they did a presentation on Resolution 20 last time at the same time, even though it was a companion item. So would you like to see anything again? No?
No.
Eric? No? Bert? Okay. Look at that. Off the hook for the presentation. I do not have any cards. Staff, do you have any additions or additional comments for this?
No additional comments. There are no changes from first reading. Staff is recommending approval still.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. And I don't have any comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And bring it back to a council discussion and/or a vote.
Yes, Madam Chair, move Ordinance 9, 2017 on second reading and adoption.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Now we're going to open up, the clerk already read the title for Resolution 20, so I'm going to open up the public hearing, ask for any ex parte's. This is for Resolution 20.
Same. Phone call.
Okay. Carl, I didn't hear you?
Same.
Okay. Same phone call?
Same.
And none? None. And we're going to carry over the ex parte's from the last time. No changes, I'm guessing, on Resolution 20?
For the record, no changes.
Thank you. And staff, any comments that you want to add for Resolution 20?
No additional comments.
No additional comments. I do not have any comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to a council discussion and/or a vote.
Madam Chair, move Resolution 20, 2017.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And just because you're already up here, it's easy, rather than having to stay for the very, very end of the meeting, which sometimes could be very timely, I wanted to move Resolution 30, 2017, to this, which we approved in the beginning of the meeting. So would the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 30, 2017. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving art in public places (AIPP) for the Gardens Corporate Center Plan Unit Development (PUD) Phase 2, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for any ex parte's.
Same.
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 None.
Okay. None? And phone call? Phone call? Okay.
Same carryover?
Same carryover. Well, okay. Same carryover then. Okay. And would the petitioner please provide us with a presentation?
Good evening. Madam members of the council, I think you were all copied on an email exchange between Dodie Glass and Natalie on Monday where we requested this item to be postponed to May. So I'm really here to ask you for that postponement. I'm more than happy to go into my reasons for that if you wish it, but it's a simple enough request and we don't believe that the city in any way is being damaged or harmed by this two-month delay. It really only affects us. So that's really our request for this evening on this item. And thank you for the previous item.
You're welcome. Okay. So in this case, I'd like to hear, I guess, from the council. Do you have any comments in regards to this? I know Eric is on the art in public places and this, I believe, has been discussed by art in public places.
Yes, it has. It was discussed by art in public places and there was, there was no recommendation made on this particular project. They did take a vote to approve it and they did not approve it. And then apparently they took a vote to deny it and that failed. So having done that, I think they weighed in and satisfied the procedure that we normally have for this. So it falls to us as a council to make a decision. And, and having been on the art in public places board advisory, advisory board as a liaison for over 25 years, I mean, I'd like to make a decision on this rather than kick it over to the next council. I think that's appropriate, especially since we've all been here longer than anyone who's coming onto the council. And I think it makes sense. You are here. Your petitioner is here and see no reason why we can't proceed with this today.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make?
No.
Okay. I also would like to hear from both sides, so I'd like to hear from Natalie as well. And we did this entire council here, sitting here, did hear the, obviously, the other two items before. So being comprehensive, being transparent, being everything, it's nice to see the whole entire package at the same time. So I'd like to hear from staff as well.
May I say something?
Sure.
Please. This is very ironic because I was the one who requested to be put on this agenda for the reasons you just enunciated.
Right.
And I was told categorically that this cannot happen. It is not the city's process to do so. And I need to just be aware of the fact that I will not be heard this evening. And we accepted that until we found out a week ago that we were going to be put on this agenda. One of my concerns is this. We think we have a very good case for counting our pyramids art. Staff disagree with us. We have not had an opportunity, when we met with you to go over our project, we did not discuss this one solitary issue that we're in disagreement with, with staff, with you. And it's quite a technical discussion and I, I think that if I had known I was going to be here and I had not been told categorically, "You will not be on this agenda," I would probably have spent 90% of my time with you, talking to you about this issue. That would have given you the opportunity to absorb what I have to say, to check what I have to say independently. As opposed to tonight, where I'm going to make my case, staff are going to make their case, you're going to have to make an instantaneous decision. And I, that's the reason I'm asking for a delay. I, I would much rather have had it tonight if I was able to prepare myself properly by including it in our detailed discussion on our project, which I have not. None of you really heard anything about why we disagree with staff on this issue. And that's the reason I'm asking for a delay and I don't, and it really does not harm the city in any way. We're the only people affected. Frankly, it doesn't need to be resolved until we have a CO, which conceivably could be two years away. We don't intend to wait that long, obviously. But I would like the opportunity to, whoever is going to vote on this, to present my case to them and give them an opportunity to look into the arguments I've made and make up their mind. That's, that's really my request.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd like to also hear from Natalie as well.
Sure. Yes, good evening. Nadir is correct in that well over a month ago, there was very clear expression from the applicant to be on this agenda. We informed Nadir that what was precipitating the decision, why the art couldn't be on the same agenda, on this evening's agenda, was that the project approval was necessary. That was the reason why we said, really, you know, the project has to be approved and then it has to go to April. And really, it wasn't until after those discussions that we said, well, you know, we can figure out a better way to do this. The applicant has requested to be on this March agenda. Let's structure the agenda. And albeit it was a big agenda, you've seen the volume of the agenda, but we simply tried to accommodate this applicant's request. The applicant's proposal regarding the pyramid towers has not changed since the AIPP presentation, which was done last June. The same materials, the same information, the same technical analysis that they have provided would essentially be the same and staff's analysis has virtually been the same as well. This discussion is a public hearing, so all of the information that certainly, certainly the applicant would have presented on individual one-on-one meetings would essentially be the same information that would be presented in transparency for the public this evening. So, you know, the one-on-one meetings, meeting requests, I would really like to clarify, are not a part of the planning process. There are often requests from applicants to have one-on-one meetings, but the one-on-one meetings are simply a, not a standard process. They're not, they, and many council members simply do not want to meet at all. And certainly that was a very strict policy that former Mayor Russo had and many other council members as well. So, you know, I did want to clarify that process, that the, simply the request for the individual one-on-one meetings is not part of the standard process. And I with due respect, disagree that this can wait till the CO because staff does have a fundamental disagreement with the applicant on, on what this specific feature is. And we have a, we have taken the position that this is an intrinsic part of the architecture of the building. And we feel very uncomfortable having the building start construction without having this matter issued and resolved, without having a clear identification or understanding of whether or whether or not this feature is going to be constructed. Because as part of the CO process, we would expect to see those tower features because that is part of the project's approvals, which just received second and final approval. So that is staff's response. We are ready to present and it's the council's decision.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a decision to make. The decision is whether to postpone or not postpone. We heard from one council member that they would like to hear the petition. Do we have any comments from anybody else, whether they want to hear it or not?
I would like Nadir to, obviously he wants to say something, so I want to hear it. What does he want to say?
Well, I was just going to comment on the CO. It's a huge, obviously, if we, to get a building permit from you, we would have to show the pyramids. Otherwise, we wouldn't get a building permit. So we're at risk, there's no risk to the city on this. If you get a building permit, we can't get a CO until this, so we could build this beautiful building for forty, fifty million dollars and not get a CO. So the risk is all mine. And on the one-on-one, I didn't mean a private meeting. I don't know if that's what you implied. We have meetings in your office with the elected officials like we did before. And I just, I just feel as though for me to get, for you to, to understand my rationale, some of, you may not, you may not need it. You may vote for me tonight. I don't know. But I certainly will have a better chance if you've had an opportunity to think about what I have said and check what I have said and satisfied yourself that what I say is accurate. That's all. I mean, I don't really know why this has become such a big deal.
Okay. Comments?
I know when I had my presentation on this, the art in public places was not a part of the conversation. So, and just like we did with the PGA Corridor, we compromised, took a step backward to discuss parking and so-and-so. And this is a huge project that's going to cost however many millions. The only delay we're having is this discussion here tonight. There's no harm coming to the community. So I think in order to compromise on such a huge project and there needs to be, obviously there needs to be a debate, maybe even with a public, with a workshop with, without public opinion, so we can all debate it right here with the attorneys, with Max, I don't have a problem with further discussion on it because it doesn't damage anything. If there was damage to something, I would probably push forward, but I don't, if there's no damage and there's, the only delay is to you, so we can, you do realize that you could be presenting this in front of a new council?
I do.
And then you'll agree that whatever happens in the future will be the it and we're, we're, if, well, I'm only one person, but apparently with, you're not being happy and I have not heard a debate or had a presentation on these structures, or not structures, whatever you're saying they are, then I think compromise is what we do. So that's how I feel about it, Mayor. I have no problem with further conversations on it.
You have no problem? Okay, I need to know clearly, do you have a problem with the, do you want to proceed with the petition at, for Art in Public Places, or do you want to postpone it?
I want to postpone it so there can be more conversations had.
Okay.
It's fair.
Okay. Maria?
Natalie, is there anything in our code indicating how the pyramids are an intrinsic part of the building? So they wouldn't be part, art in public places?
If, if I may, I, I just, and I understand your question. It's a quasi judicial hearing and if they're going to, if, I don't really want to get into the factual determinations or what's in the code or not in the code as far as this. I mean, really just want to talk about the postponement right now instead of getting into the substance of, anything related to the substance of the application. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Then, then I actually, I need more information, so I'm not sure I'd be able to make a vote tonight, so I would, I'd be okay with a postponement.
Thank you.
Okay. And as a, just to throw it out there, as a planner, I like to see a comprehensive approach. And whether or not it is approved or not approved, if it's, let's say, let's say it's not approved, the art would have to go somewhere else on the site. And to me, that is the devil's in the detail. So moving forward as you proceed, the public place, this is a Class A building, so the public place is a part of the entire project. It's a special thing. This is a class, this is a beautiful, beautiful building and, which is why you had unanimous approval. It is something that we need to be proud of and we would be proud of. As we've seen it, we will be proud of this building as we move forward. It is the gateway, right in the gateway of our city. So if it's, if this art, wherever it may be, if it ends up somewhere else, I'd like to see it as part of the entire site. If it's a technical thing, there is no council better than this council here to understand technicalities. We've done it for many, you know, decades, decades and decades. Have we, we know the code very well. We know that art in public places, we have someone here that spent 30 years, well, not quite, but 26 years in art in public places. And this is his last meeting to where he can have an opportunity to see and also use the history from the past. In addition, we get pounded nonstop about transparency. We just had our meeting with, with the entire, the rest of the parcel and this is, and I hear what you said, you weren't allowed to have it because, but then they compromised, like, like Carl mentioned, they compromised and put it at the end so you wouldn't have to come back. So we're not wasting time, we're not wasting energy, we're not wasting anybody else's time. And they can hear everything all comprehensively together. So, I mean, if it's a technicality, we're here to listen. We want to know. We want to understand your side of the, of the story and we want to hear it. So I would love to hear the opportunity, I'd love to be here to hear the opportunity, I'd love to have a say in what happens on this piece of property because I'm a planner and I'm very curious to see what the proposal is. So with that said, um...
Can I just, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm in favor of, of keeping it on the agenda.
I appreciate your, your referring to my expertise on this. The city is at risk here, frankly, if we don't do this tonight. Because these pyramids on top of this building has been, have been there throughout the entire process of, of this application. And they were always considered part of the building, not, not part of the art. I know the applicant would like to make it part of their, their requirement for art, but it's always been there. It's always the way I've seen it. Now, if I'm going to approve this tonight and then it's going to change, I don't like the idea that it's going to change. I'd rather not approve this tonight, frankly, and I just did. So I strenuously feel that we should be the ones who make this decision and not people, with all due respect to the people who are, who are running for public office today, they do not have the expertise that are on this council. And, and, and I really believe that we should be, we should be hearing the presentation of both sides tonight. It is transparent. There are people out there who do tell us all the time that we're not transparent, even though we are. And this would be, this would fly in the face of that, frankly. And, and I don't want to be, my last meeting and, and be accused of, of kicking the can down the road. So I'm, I, I hope I've changed someone's mind. I hope I, I hope I have.
Let's just take a vote. Yes, sir.
With respect to Mr. Javelin, we do have an April 6, this might be a Max Lohman question. We do have an April 6. Is there a reason why we can't encompass that in the first few moments of, I mean, if it's no, it's no, but I'm just throwing it out there.
I believe that the applicant's out of town. It was, it was not April, it was May.
They called me here April 6th.
So I believe that there, the whole reason that we put it on this agenda was because you had, I think, a conflict in May.
Right.
So, um...
No, I can do it in May.
I'm sorry, in April, I apologize. In April. I apologize for saying that. That was incorrect. That was based on the letter. So anyway, let's just take a vote right now because I know we have other business to attend, to get to as well. So let's just take a vote on the postponement in general, okay? All in favor for a postpon, well, we need a motion. What am I doing?
Need a motion.
I'm sorry about that. We need a motion. I got ahead of myself.
Madam Chair, move to not, um...
Postpone.
Postpone. And to hear the, and to hear this, to...
We have a motion.
Move to hear Resolution 30, 2017 tonight.
Okay. We have a motion to not postpone.
Second.
We have a motion to not postpone in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. We have, uh, we have a motion, we have, we have an approval to not postpone, three to two.
Just so, just so that the record is clear, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It was my request, for all the reasons you said, to be on this, on this agenda, for all the reasons you've all said. My, and I don't want to come out here the bad guy because I get a week's notice and said, hey, you're on, after being told categorically you cannot be on.
Well, now we're giving you the opportunity, so we would love to hear your proposal.
I have a presentation to... It's right here. I'll leave it plugged in so that there's no concern. Kind of set you up.
So, so you're gonna, now that you voted not to postpone it, you're going to get me instead of the very nice Dodi?
We're happy to have you here.
For the record, Nadir Solor representing the developer. We're here.
Have you been sworn in, sir?
I, I have been, yes. So this, as you saw, am I doing something wrong? No. As you saw in our first hearing, these are buildings in the background. Just to remind you, we're at the corner of PGA, an alternate A1A. Here's the view from your bridge, the alternate A1A Bridge. And our two art pieces that we are requesting to count towards our Arts in Public Places are the pyramids highlighted in this exhibit. I put this aerial in just to remind everyone that there's a 55-foot buffer that surrounds this project on PGA and alternate A1A, which has to be thoroughly landscaped per your code. And that's really the reason why it pushed us to put the pyramid on top of the building, because you couldn't see it from the ground. It's one of your requirements is for the art to be visible by the public. This is a picture along the PGA bypass, existing condition, just to give you a feel for the level of landscaping. This is a ground level and therefore precluding anything to be seen from the street. This is a vision, this is a picture, excuse me, of heading north on alternate A1A. You can see the financial building on the right-hand side. You can just see the top of it. And we're about the same height, we would just be to the left of it. I'm showing you these few exhibits and this is the ramp on 95. Again, the financial building is to your left and we would be right next to it. I'm showing you this exhibit to show our rationale because it's critical for you to understand why we did that. This is a view from the front of the building. The authentic pyramid-shaped design with flexibility to change the color and lighting to highlight special events or seasons. And I know there was some discussion during our site plan and I'm happy to talk about that at the appropriate time. Us, the other point that I'd like you to focus on is that us, the, the pyramid performs zero function. It doesn't hold the building up. It doesn't keep the rain out. It doesn't weatherproof the building. It's just sitting there. No structural reason to be there other than art. The person who designed this is Robert Swedlow, famous architect and artist from Miami. This exhibit shows the kind of art he does. He's a, he's a full-blown artist, not just an architect. Buzz saw these buildings that he designed in Miami Beach. That's really where he got the idea. And he's been involved in designing the pyramids and being our artist. He's, he's been displaying his work since 1962, including Art Palm Beach in 2015. He won an award from the Miami Chapter of American Institute of Architects for their Art by Architects competition. So one of your criteria is whoever designs or produces the art be a recognized artist. I think there's no question that he is. We went one step further. Even the manufacturer that we use to create the pyramids has a, a history of, of doing artwork all over the world. Here are five examples of what they've done, from Italy to Florida to Dallas. These are the kind of structures they specialize in and they're the people that we've contracted to, to construct the pyramids. This is the pyramid itself. It's constructed of galvanized painted white steel tubes. Pyramids are approximately 58 feet high and 58 feet wide. When we went to P&amp;Z, and also I think for sure P&amp;Z, but maybe even in the Art Committee, a suggestion was made that we light, we were going to light it anyway because it's a requirement, but that we light it in different colors, that we have the option to light it in different colors for the season. And we agreed to do that. If the council don't want us to do it and want to leave it as white, we're okay with The project budget, as you know, 1% of the construction cost needs to be spent on art. So this slide shows you how we came up with the numbers. Each tower will cost $20 million, total of $40 million. And then on the project budget, these pyramids cost $685,000 each. Combined, 1.37 million. The vertical costs 40 million. 1% of that is 400,000, so we're required to spend 400,000. We're spending almost a million dollars more than the requirement on these pyramids. Staff has a concern that the pyramid is integral to the building. Well, you know, when we first met with staff, pre-application in fact, what we said, and we've been consistent with this all along, is that the way we've cost justified spending substantial dollars on this element is by thinking that at least 400,000 of it, we'd have to spend on art anyway. And we thought this is a unique location in our favorite city and let's do something really special. And we, there, if it was a question of just putting an element up there, I can assure you, we could do it for substantially less than, you know, almost $2 million. I think also, if I took this pyramid and put it on the ground, if I had a site where it could be visible from the ground, we wouldn't be having a disagreement with staff. So the question is, is it art? Does it cease to be art because I put it on top of the building? I, I, I don't follow that logic. These are some examples of what the city has approved as art. And I, I put this up because I agree it all is art. But I put this up because, for example, your bridge element, it serves no purpose structurally. It's not keeping your bridge up. It's not stabilizing the road. It's beautiful. And it counts as art. No different to ours. The stained glass, it should count as art. It's beautiful. That actually performs a function. It keeps the weather out, a lot more than art, art piece does. An art piece does nothing except sit there and get lit at night. The bench, that's functional. You can actually sit on it. I'm not disagreeing that these should, should not be counted as art. I'm just saying if these are counted as art, I don't understand why mine isn't, ours isn't. I, I, I just don't. The bus shelter, we have a condition of approval that says we need to put one of these and that will get credit against Arts in Public Places. How is this not a structure? It's beautiful. It should count as art. It's functional. I don't understand why ours doesn't count. These are some examples of art on buildings. The store trails, those elements count as art. And the legends, that counts as art. The clock tower counts, again, I think you should. Somewhere in the staff report, it makes mention of our neighbor and that they have an architectural element on top of their building and ours is the same. I, I, I'll, I'll just say that ours was designed by an artist. This was not designed by an artist. This is a skylight. And it is an architectural element. I agree. It's not art. And they didn't ask for it to be art, but it doesn't qualify under your code as art. Also in the staff report, they talk about the fact that PGA corridor is a very special corridor and that our building without the pyramid would, I can't remember the exact word, but the feeling was it wouldn't fit. So this is a picture of PGA Boulevard looking east directly in front of our building. You can see the buildings that we will be competing with. This is a picture PGA Boulevard looking west, just the other side of the bridge. These are the buildings that we need to be at least as good as. This is our building. I submit to you that with or without the pyramid, our building more than fits into PGA Boulevard. So now, we, we get on to your code. This is right out of your code book. This says artwork shall be displayed in a visually accessible location. I don't think there's any question that we meet that criteria. Artwork shall be integrated into the overall planning and design of the structure. I think we more than meet that. The next one is really not applicable to... The next one is really not applicable to us because we're not on the ground. Artwork should be lighted at minimum from dusk until midnight, which we have agreed to do. Artwork installed pursuant to this division cannot be altered, we agree to that. Artwork should be maintained in good condition, we've agreed to that. If it's purchased, well, we're not purchasing it from the fund, so it's not applicable. Artwork should be in compliance of Florida code, we meet that. So, in conclusion, these are, in essence, the three concerns that staff have, based on their staff report, that we don't fit in with the architecture that exists without the pyramid. And I think, if you look at these pictures, hopefully you will agree with me that we do. That the AIPP requirements would be greatly diminished by considering architecture as art. Again, we don't believe it's architecture, and these are the examples of things you've approved rightly so, that we think we are compatible with. And the code was changed to eliminate architectural features and aesthetic features to count towards AIPP. These two projects were approved after 2007, when you changed your code. So, the location dictates the elevation, the fact that it has to be elevated. The art was designed by a prominent local artist. Manufacturing installer is an international art experience company. All related Palm Beach Gardens AIPP code standards are met. Other similar types of AIPP projects exist, and I think we're going significantly beyond the minimum requirement. So, we did discuss this item, as Eric mentioned, at Austin Public, the Art in Public Places Committee, and Planning and Zoning. It really not under the purview of planning and zoning, but it came up during the meeting because it was mentioned in the staff report. And if you look at the records of that meeting, the vast majority of the members thought it was art. The committee, after a long discussion, I made a similar presentation to the one I've made to you here tonight, probably almost exactly the same, did not support staff's denial. And after much discussion, they passed it on to council without, which is very unusual, perhaps you should think why. We have also, just so that you don't think that we haven't cooperated with staff, we have agreed to every single change staff have asked us to do, from changing our architectural design to changing the color of the glass. But we haven't agreed to this, because we really feel strongly, firstly, it's a very large ticket item, added cost to the building, and we really feel as though, for whatever reason, we're not communicating, and, and the one thing I thought we wouldn't argue about on this project was this, that was the one thing I thought there would be no discussion of. So, the pyramid is designed by an artist, visible to the general public, valued above the required dollar values, building certainly fits within the PGA corridor, and similar works have been approved as art before. With that, I'll stop, and Doty and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the petitioner?
I'm in the listening mode.
Okay, listening mode.
Go ahead.
Okay, does anybody have any questions at this point? Okay, Natalie, we'd like to hear your presentation, please.
My name is Natalie Crowley, and I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning, and with me is Dawn Sonneborn, who has been working on this petition, as well as the project that was just approved by the council via Ordinance 9 and Resolution 20, that was submitted in July of 2015 with these elements on them. And it is really since this time where there has been a fundamental disagreement between the applicant and staff as to this issue. So, this issue, it has been a conflicting issue for quite some time now, so thank you very much for the opportunity for staff's presentation. And I don't think our presentation is quite as lengthy as the applicant's presentation, but I do want to take a moment to present staff's overview of the subject request. The subject request, which is a separate application from Gardens Corporate Center, is to essentially recognize and allow for the two pyramid-shaped building rooftop architectural elements located above the two 11-story office buildings to serve or to get credit for art in public places. Staff is recommending denial on this petition, and I'm happy to go through some slides to explain a little bit in more detail as to the why. You all know where the site is, don't need to spend any time on that. And really, I do want to take a moment to look at this project for just a moment, because I want to really emphasize that since day one, when this project was submitted, and when I say project, I mean the PUD and the resolution that was just approved just moments ago. These towers have always been on the project. The towers were depicted on all of the elevations, the towers were depicted in the pre-application meeting, the towers were an intrinsic part of the building's overall character and architecture of why staff simply overwhelmingly supported this project. As you all know, the proposed towers were 11 stories, they are 11 stories as approved by council, they requested a significant height waiver, the building itself significantly tall, a height waiver for the 11 stories, and the actual features themselves, an additional 58 feet. As part of staff's consideration for justification for exceeding height waivers dramatically within the zoning code, we look at exactly these features to say, hey, this project, it adequately justifies and mitigates the height waiver requested because of this strong architectural feature that was approved, and that was just approved by the city council. So, I really want to emphasize that while we may have a fundamental disagreement of, you know, what's art and what's architecture, and certainly there are some gray areas, the real issue here is timing and the representation of what was shown to staff all along since day one for this project, which always included the tower features. Had the tower features not been included in the project, staff simply would have taken an entirely different look on the project in terms of justification for the height waiver and justification for the project overall. So, we love the towers, we think that they are gorgeous, we strongly have supported the project. As the applicant can attest, the project took a really long time to review, it was submitted in 2015, that's a long time in the queue. We helped facilitate the movement, we had some real strong issues with DOT that required the easement release, we helped in that, we liked the project, we assisted in the project. But the issue really is then the timing of then coming back and saying, by the way, we would like to get credit for these architectural features as art. So really, that's where the rubber is meeting the road here in terms of staff's concern, and I do have more reasons that I want to go into on why we are at this juncture. So as you can see, the proposed elevations that were approved just moments ago included all along the tower features, and, you know, the, taking out the pyramid features would entirely change the look and the feel, the entire character of the project overall. This was the renderings that were approved, and as the applicant indicated before, yes, the staff report refers to the adjacent building, we never said it was the same, we were simply saying, hey, this is part of the PUD, its sister building next door had a feature that was intentionally trying to provide some type of feature, open-air feature on the top of the building, and we recognize, truly recognize, that there are very strong differences between the existing structure that is on the building, as you can see below here where my cursor is, and the proposed. We were simply including the building as part of staff's presentation to show a similar comparison for an architectural feature, which is on the very same PUD, which in fact did not receive AIPP credit. The applicant has presented information on the artist himself, this is all in your packet. The artist is Robert Swerdow, I hope I pronounced that, thank you. He is based in Miami Beach, and from the packet that was submitted to staff, that's included, it is clear that he is an architect, and his primary niche is on collages. That is, he is a collage artist, he may have other avenues, but the information that was submitted in the packet focused on this artist being primarily focused on collages. I'm glad that the applicant mentioned in his presentation the blue and green diamond towers. This too was brought to staff's attention, that this was one of the ideas that was sparked from Mr. DeVasta himself on why he wanted to do something similar. These towers are up there in Miami today, two similar buildings, very similar to the ones that are being proposed. And I think as Councilmember Jablin very well recalls, one of the consistent themes in art in public places is, you know, is the art truly unique? And as you can see, there's a very strong un- uniqueness going on between these existing towers that are in Miami that have already been constructed. We called Miami Beach, and we asked, do you have an art in places code? They said, yes, we do. We asked, did these towers count toward their art in public places program? They said, absolutely, they did not. So, we did confirm with Miami Beach, where these buildings were constructed, that these towers were never credited toward Miami Beach's art in public places program. And really, finally, this is really a very clear policy in staff's opinion on a project that is directly in conflict with an existing ordinance. Ordinance 1 was adopted in 2007, which specifically removed the ability for architectural features to be credited toward art in public places. And it's very clear as to why, the culture of why the art in public places program is so celebrated in the city really emphasizes the importance of the public access and the availability, and the differential between the landscaping and the architecture. Architecture is very important too, and we strive to have great architecture along the PGA corridor, and I actually take exception to some of the photos that were shown in the applicant's presentation along the PGA corridor, because I think many of those buildings were very beautiful, but you have to consider the time and the time in which they emerged, and many of those buildings were, you know, were constructed, you know, over 20 years ago. And I think if you look at some of the projects that have come through recently, that have yet to be constructed, you will truly see a different scale of architecture. And we never turn to the existing architecture along the PGA corridor to say, that's our mark, that's what we should go for. It's precisely why we say we need to strive higher, we need to elevate the PGA corridor to strive for higher beauty, and I'll tell you, UTC is a perfect example of that. And I think that we believe that staff, staff strongly believes that good architecture should stand on its own, and that's precisely why we reviewed this project and wholeheartedly supported the height waiver that was previously approved, because we saw it as beautiful, strong, good architecture. And we believe that this ordinance is very clear from council's policy that adopted it, that architectural features should not be credited.
Natalie, back up, please.
Sure. Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead.
I think one of the fundamental aspects of staff's disagreement with the proposed applicant is they have claimed that they, they will claim, and they can, they've continued to emphasize that they've always submitted this as art, you know, we've always asked for this to be art, we always wanted it to be credited as art, and we've said consistently, this is part of your architecture, and you will have to go through a separate process in order to provide that determination. So we have been very clear, and we fundamentally believe that the pyramid tower features that you all just approved is an intrinsic part of the architecture of the building. Before I close, I do want to, there were a few projects that the applicant mentioned, the bridge over the flyover, the store, bus shelters, legends at the gardens, all of those projects, while they have features applied, no doubt, the mosaics on the legends at the Gardens Pharmacy, the store building that have additional features, those are enhancements to a building. It is staff's position that they were not an intrinsic piece of the architectural foundation of the buildings themselves, that is really the difference. You know, the elements that were added on, whether it be the mosaics, or whether it be some of the other decorative elements that were counted ultimately toward art, when you look at the scale of the two 11-story towers and the pyramid, and the magnitude of what those towers would look like without those, we believe you simply cannot compare. So with that, staff strongly recommends denial of Resolution 30, and we're happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie? I'm looking to, somebody answer.
I do have a question, but not for Natalie, I have a question for an adjourned.
Okay, that's fine, no problem. All right, we'll start with, we'll start with Maria.
The water feature that you showed, is that, how are you treating that, or how was staff treating that?
Well, again, you know, the question is, do you go by the verbatim, the code, which is what we think we've done with the pyramid? That is not designed by an artist, and to meet art, it needs to be designed by an artist. You could argue it's not visible by the general public, because you have to really be in our parking lot to see it. In fact, P&amp;Z and Art in Public Places asked us the same thing. And I would just like to, for the record, Natalie corrected some of it, from day one, we did say this is art, for the reasons that I said, that we knew we had to spend $400,000 extra, and we wanted to do something special. But the first time we found out that staff disagreed with us was when I read the staff report before going to P&amp;Z, a few days before P&amp;Z. And, you know, we'd been in the process, I don't know, over a year by then, and we moved ahead with it. So it's not like this was communicated to us the first day we said this is art, because it was not.
You have questions, do you have any more questions, Maria?
Not at this time.
Okay. Carl, do you have questions?
Nadir, if you took, these are atriums as well as they will let light into the building?
No.
They're not?
No, they perform absolutely no function.
Okay. If you removed those, no water would get into the building?
No, sir.
The water fountain, how much did that cost, or whatever it is?
I don't remember. Buzz, do you remember? Lots of money.
Water fountains are expensive.
They're not fountains, they're waterfalls.
Waterfalls, sorry, water wall, actually, I believe.
Right, right. I don't have that in my head, Carl, sorry.
Still trying to guide towards a compromise, is there a way you can affix a piece of art to the water fountain and call the whole thing art?
Well, we could, I don't know if it will qualify, but Natalie- Natalie, maybe you can give some guidance on this.
I don't think it's really reasonable for us to talk concepts without having the opportunity to look at thoroughly what the presentation would be. Certainly, I can tell you, other Art in Public Places program has used water as an element that has been commonly used. It can be beautiful, it could be art, but staff would need the opportunity to look at a complete application submittal, or at least have some type of meeting to discuss the concept in which the applicant wouldn't have to spend a lot of time or money. We would be willing to meet and discuss that. But I'm not able to tell you right now what wouldn't qualify without looking at the details.
Okay, so that's a possibility.
But going on your comment, which is a very good comment, it being in the place, because I know you said that it's not in a public place, but in the past, I've said, or I've thought, and I could be wrong, but I've thought the general public is able to come visit your facility. So, in my opinion, the roof, the general public is not going to be up there. However, in your atrium, in that area where the water wall is, there are opportunities potentially to have general public there versus on the roof. So I can see where you're going.
That's exactly where I was going, because you can't see, moving on from the pyramids, you can't see anything from public right-of-way, because we have 50-foot buffers.
Correct.
And you're going to have public moving in and out of that building all day long. So is that waterfall not in view of the general public? I would have to say, Eric, I got a...
I'm going to build on what you're saying. I think that there is a possibility, if they put a feature in the, around that area, that if it was designed by an artist, it would meet the criteria for Art in Public Places ordinance, I do. But that would also mean that this wouldn't, okay?
Right.
So you can't have it both ways.
Correct. So Nadir...
I think he's trying to go towards a compromise.
We've done eight up a big chunk, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, I'm sorry.
We've done eight up a big chunk of that $400,000 by your waterfall, have we not? How much have you said that's worth? Does anybody know?
No, the waterfall is not part of the art. If there was a piece designed inside the waterfall, similar to what they did at Downtown at the Gardens, on both the one side and the other, those are pieces that were designed by artists. They're in a water feature within the complex. You can't see it from the road. You really have to go inside of Downtown at the Gardens, which is the same situation you have here. So I think that could count.
Where the public...
Do you agree? I think.
But then we can't...
Visitors.
But you can't count what's there to, that feature, the waterfall, is not a piece of art. But you could design a piece of art inside the pond or receptacle, or even on the wall itself, that would... But that's not, yeah, but that's not the question we're in tonight. That would be for a future council to decide. But if you're saying, could they, do they have an opportunity to put another piece of art on the property that's more or less interior to the project and counted as Art in Public Places, I would say yes to that. But that doesn't preclude the fact that, in my opinion, this does, this should not count as a piece of art.
Do you have any other...
And that's what we're voting on tonight in Ordinance 30.
Do you have any other questions, Carl? For the applicant or for Natalie?
Perfect, we should have postponed it.
Right.
I got you, three to two.
Do you have any other questions with...
No, so there's no way that he can enhance this water fountain so he can encompass the previous costs and continue the build on the water fountain to absorb some of these costs? No.
The answer is no, but you can use the area around, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't solve the problem.
To be passers.
All right, I'm done.
To be considered general public, I guess.
I have to clarify that if the applicant was willing to submit a request incorporating elements of the waterfall to be reviewed, it certainly could count under a separate application where we would have the opportunity to review it. And I do want to emphasize that could be a possibility. We can't commit today without looking at a specific proposal, but we actually have even mentioned the water wall concept before to the applicant, so it's not new.
Yeah, every board we've been in front of said, well, why don't you just use that?
Will we just open a door for you?
Okay, so, anybody else have any questions?
We can't approve that tonight, because we can't.
Correct, correct.
There's no way.
We all understand that.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions or comments, Bert? Do you have any other questions or comments?
Okay. I do have a few questions, and that is, I know you made a comment about, from day one, the structure was there on the top, which I hear both of you agreed with that. Did you ever suggest or make, let them know that this is not, can't count for Art in Public Places at any time in your meetings in the past?
Yes, I mean, our review process involves the taking in of an application, and then we have a DRC meeting in which then correspondence occurs from staff sent to the applicant, and there's a back and forth, so to speak, until really the certification comments are addressed. Before the planning and zoning report was generated, where it might have been the applicant's first opportunity to actually see a denial, we, long before that time, expressed in our DRC comment memos our concern. So we might, it might not have been expressed in the same method that he might have read in the staff report, but we really, early on in the process, emphasized, hey, we love this architecture, we love this art, we love this building, and we'll support your height waiver, and we'll look at the adequate, we see it as, you know, essentially justification for your waiver, and we recommend approval, but we have issues with you having, with it counting as art, because it's an architectural feature, which is in direct conflict with the ordinance that the City Council adopted.
Okay. And did P&amp;Z approve the art? I was a little confused on that statement. Did they approve the art?
P&amp;Z did not. P&amp;Z approved the project, which included the tower elements.
Okay.
What I said, just to clear the record, this is not in P&amp;Z's purview.
Right, no, I understand. That's why I heard you say that. That's why I wanted a clarification.
It happened to be in a condition.
Right.
So it was discussed.
Okay, I understand that.
And the vast majority thought it was art.
Okay, I understand. I was just trying to get clarif, thank you for that clarification. And then when it comes to the lighting, the lighting for the approval that we just approved, the past ordinance and resolution, that was a single light, I remember.
Correct.
We discussed that, and is this proposal requiring or asking for the lighting, whether it's art or not, to change?
I can address that.
Go ahead.
There's a condition of approval that specifically included in this resolution for the pyramid shapes that indicate that clear lighting only, consistent with the city code, is allowed. However, the applicant did indicate that they would, they could, they would be willing to provide color lighting, potentially sync it to the bridge, or all sorts of possibilities with LED lighting, which was exciting. But we simply wanted the opportunity to be able to review those proposed packages, because if left unregulated, it could potentially conflict with the bridge, and we wanted the opportunity to be able to look at that. So the condition of approval says clear lighting only, and if any color lights are requested, then they would be required to come to staff for approval. So there's a process that's been established for color lights.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay.
I'm not done.
That was my question. You have more questions? Okay, go ahead.
I really appreciate this healthy debate. It's good. I know we've heard from both sides, but I would really like to hear a legal opinion on the ordinance itself, Max.
Sure.
I think that's one thing to cap it off.
Related to the 2007 ordinance, the 2007 ordinance specifically removed the section so that architectural items would not be considered, and you saw that on Natalie's presentation. And it was contemplated by the council at the time. While they didn't adopt a specific prohibition in the ordinance, I think it's pretty clear that the intent was that architectural features not be credited. And the staff gave rationale and the backup for that ordinance, and that's when it was removed, back in 2007. And as far as any, if you had any buildings or any approvals that may have happened subsequent to that ordinance, even if something was considered an architectural element even in error, the case law is very clear that even if you make a mistake, you're not required to continue to perpetuate that mistake to avoid being unfair. So, meaning that if you make an oops, you don't then have to make an oops for the next person, so that you're accused of being unfair, as long as it's not arbitrary and capricious. And I think that something that happened a decade ago wouldn't really qualify as arbitrary and capricious.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the petitioner or for staff? Nobody? Okay. I'm going to then get back to my list here and close, we did all that. I'm going to close the public, I don't have any comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing, loud enough, and bring it back for a council discussion and/or...
Well, before we make a motion.
Or a motion.
Okay?
Yep.
Before we do, normally we open up with a motion, but I, because I'm about to make a motion to deny this, but before I do, I want to say why. Okay? Is that okay? Well, here's my rationale. First of all, I don't believe this is a piece of art. And the reason I don't believe it's a piece of art is because it was inspired by two buildings in Miami that the applicant admired and wanted to replicate. Those two pieces, those two towers in Miami could have been applied to an Art in Public Places ordinance, but it wasn't. And they have an Art in Public Places ordinance, similar to ours in Miami. And so why wasn't it? Because it wasn't, it was a piece of architecture, and it follows our ordinance as well. So I don't believe, I think it's a beautiful building. I think the two towers are lovely. And I'm happy that they're going to light them, and even seasonally light them. But I don't see them as a piece of art, and I do not want to set any precedents or break any of our ordinances. And I think that this does not qualify, and so I am going to move to deny Resolution 30 2017.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I do want to also comment on this before I vote. Does anybody want to make any comments?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just want to say some things in regards to, you know, I'm not an art guy, so I'm going to rely...
He's a banker.
I'm a banker. You want to get some money, I'll figure it out. But on the art side, the buildings itself, without those towers, are nothing. I mean, so I like to drive around the city, and I like to see art at a visual level, at a local level. I like to see ground-level art. I love to see some beautiful art on this corner. But looking up to me at 11 stories, the architectural of this building is beautiful with those towers or pyramids, or whatever you call them. But I think when you take them off, there's really nothing exciting about that at that point. So to us, we like to see the top architecturally done, but still allow for architecture on the bottom, whether there's something incorporated in the waterfalls, or whatever you need to do on the building side, for AIPP to look at it again. But I just want to see art when I drive around the city, and I ain't looking up 11 stories to see it. I want to see it ground-level. I want to see people coming into your buildings, looking at roundabouts and the parking lots and all the other stuff. With the beautiful landscaping you're going to have, that's great. But I just think visually for our city, we need to keep it at ground level and enhance the beauty of that corner in our city. So, sorry to deny it. Again, I'm not a specialty on this, but I agree with staff on this, and I agree with Eric, that essentially that's where the art level needs to be. So, sorry.
Okay. Anybody else want to make any comments?
Well, at least, you know, we opened up the debate, and we opened up another door to go another direction, although structurally speaking, I would agree, it's a part of the structure. Although going over the PGA Bridge, you're going to be eye-to-eye with it. And if you light it up at night, it's going to be right there. So at least through the debate, we have another avenue to continue. So that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. And I do, the building is absolutely beautiful, and it is a special building. And the reason it's special is because of that structure. And it is, and everyone said, it's a Class A building. And to be a Class A building, you have to have special amenities, architectural features, both inside and outside of a Class A building. And, in my opinion, and I'm not an architect, but from my point of view and from my experience, that's always been the case. And it is a special building. It's a beautiful, beautiful building, and I'm so glad to have been a part, and I'm looking forward to seeing it as I drive by in a couple of years when it's built. And hopefully, it won't take you long, so you can get people moved in there right away and start renting and making some money on it, because I'm sure you will. It's special. But having, like Natalie said, the consist, we've had, we've been actually, not me, because I wasn't on the council, but we've had some council members, they had a tough time and got a lot of slack for approving duplicative art, art that was the same, bought by, it was an artist, but it was duplicative. And we got a lot of, got, not in a lot of trouble, but we got a lot of bashing for that. And so, you know, I don't think that that's what this is. The commons, PGA commons, that is a special place. And one of the reasons that it's so special is because it has beautiful art, it has wonderful little special pockets as you progress through the site. Art is peppered throughout that entire site, and that's what makes it special. And that's why we're proud to have it in the gardens. We, in Palm Beach Gardens, we strive, like Natalie said, for something a little bit more special than might occur somewhere else in the county. And the reason that we do that, and that's the reason that people love it here, that's the reason that our property values are doing wonderful, that's the reason that people want to work, live, and play and learn here. And we're very happy that they do, but it's because of the standard that we've all, all of you, including yourself, who designed this building in such a special way. So I implore our staff to work with you, whether it's in the fountain, but in a public place, and to allow, I know the site has big buffers, and I know that the right-of-way is a little bit different because of the way, the bridge and everything, but in my opinion, your general public, your visitors, are passers-by, and that, in my opinion, would be defined as general public also. So I would encourage staff to consider that when you're placing your art and you have a wonderful courtyard there for not just the visitors, but for the people that are going to be working there, having lunch outside on a beautiful day, because it is Florida, so we're so lucky in the winter to be able to go outside, which is probably the only time we're going to be going outside, because it's so hot in the summer. But you can create a really nice place for people to explore as they're visiting and working in this building. So I'm looking forward to that. And with that said, I'd like to move forward with your motion. Okay? So we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, unanimous. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, and you've heard many comments tonight. I just want to thank you all for your service. I know what it takes.
Thank you.
And it is something that a lot of people won't step up and do, and you all have spent a lot of time and energy, and I'm sure your families will be happy to have you back.
Thank you very much.
My mic's not on, sorry.
Ordinance 10, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 10, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, inclusive providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify providing effective date for the purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask, it's a second reading, so I'm going to ask if first, if there are any changes, and if there are, does anybody want a presentation on this?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. There have been no changes since the first presentation.
No changes?
No.
Okay. Anybody want a presentation? Nope? Okay. No presentation and no questions, correct? Okay. I do not have any cards on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a council discussion and our vote.
Madam Chair, move Ordinance 10, 2017 on second reading and adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Resolution 21, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 21, 2017, a resolution, the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a planned community development, PCD amendment, for the Ballon Isles PCD to amend the side setback standards for screen enclosures and patio decks for residential properties in Parcel 1 Coral K, which is generally located on the west side of Ballon Isles Drive, approximately 1,500 feet south of the PGA Boulevard and Ballon Isles Drive intersection. Within the Ballon Isles PCD, generally located on the northeast corner of the Florida's Turnpike and Northlake Boulevard, providing an effective date and further purposes. of the Florida's Turnpike and Northlake Boulevard, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for any ex parte's.
No.
None.
None.
And I have none. Okay. Do we have a presentation from the petitioner?
Just very briefly, I know it's late. My name is Steve Matheson, the attorney for Ballin Isles Community Association. This is essentially a housekeeping matter for us.
And have you been sworn in?
I have, yes.
Thank you.
We are cleaning up some typos and some matters that needed to take place for our chart for setbacks for the Coral K subdivision within Ballin Isles. We received recommendation for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We would ask that you move this forward, so that we can now clean the matter up and move forward as a community with various homes within the community taking advantage of these setbacks, as have long been established since the beginning of Ballin Isles.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Nope, no questions. And does staff want to add any comments or?
No additional comments. Staff concurs that this is primarily housekeeping in nature, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 21-2017.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have a card on this item, so I would like to call up the person, George Wicker. If you could please come up and state your name, address for the record, and also mention if you have or have not been sworn in. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm George Wicker, 124 Isle Drive in the Gardens, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
Before I say anything regarding this resolution, I would like to just extend my deep gratitude to all of you who are on the council, especially to the three who are leaving. I have to say that in the last 15 or 16 months that I've been coming to these meetings, I just stand in awe of you people. I mean, your selflessness, your, the way you look after the community's interests, it's a true inspiration for all of us, and so I want to thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Regarding this resolution, I just wanted to say that I am a member of the Ballin Isles Community Association Board, and I want to tell you that the board unanimously approves of this action, and we have taken precautions inside of our own community to make sure that people have adequate notice, that they have an opportunity to be heard before permission is granted to do this, and that there are adequate provisions for ongoing maintenance of the homes afterward. So we'd encourage this approval of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and also thank you as a board member. I was a board member of my community, and I know it's a thankless job, and I appreciate you, and I implore you, and thank you for your service as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, that was the last card that I have on that item. So I'm going to close the, oh, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. I thought somebody said something that there was somebody else. Okay, I close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back for a council discussion and our vote.
Madam Chair, move Resolution 21-2017.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. He made his motion for the year.
While Bert runs out the door.
Bert, I can just add one thing similar to Ann. If there's anything that I can say to each of you, it's I greatly appreciate and value and hold dear in my heart the teamwork that you have shown, even when we have disagreed, when we have had to come to the middle of the bridge to make something special happen for our city. There's nothing that replaces that, and I implore our council in the future to take that and use it as a guide going forward. Let's work together. We may not always agree, but we will always achieve the best result if our hearts are in the right place. I thank you.
You're here.
Thank you very much, and it's been an absolute pleasure working with you over the years. You can't leave.
I just want you to know something. I have been the motion maker here for God knows, I don't know how many years. And Bert wanted to make this motion, and I'm glad I, more than happy to let him do that. Just to give you a little history, because I know we have, I know, I don't want to move on, but just to give you a little history, Dave Clark, who was a predecessor on this council, he used to sit right here, actually. He used to be the motion maker, and he was terrific at it. He really was. I always admired it. But when he left, because he left the city, he moved to Calusa. It fell to someone else to do it, and nobody wanted to do it. So I very hesitantly took on the task. And in the beginning, I didn't know what I was doing, frankly, but I've gotten very used to it. And Bert, you did a great job. You really did. Thank you.
He certainly did, and we won't tell anybody that he's in the restroom. Okay, we're going to move on to Ordinance 12-2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 12-2017, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of one parcel of real property totaling 3.44 acres in size, more or less, and located on the northwest corner of the intersection at Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street, to be known as the business center at the Gardens Plan Unit Development, PUD, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described to your end, shall be assigned a city zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay with an underlying zoning designation of Light Industrial M1A, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for any ex parte's.
None.
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 And I have none, too. That was very clear. I got it. Okay, and please, we're welcome.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. For the record, my name is Mike Sanchez, and I'm not going to be able to be as elegant as Steve, but I want to echo everyone's comments that you guys will be missed, and we thank you very much for your service.
And have you been sworn in?
I have, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So I know it's late. I'm going to keep this presentation as brief as possible, and I'm going to kind of speed through this, and if there's any questions, obviously, I'll be happy to answer those. I'm here representing the contract purchaser for the property, and they were not able to be here tonight, but they certainly appreciate your time. So just a summary of the request. This is a rezoning for a 3.44 acre property from Light Industrial to a plan unit development, and also site plan approval for two buildings consisting, the first one is an 18,650 square foot laboratory and research and development building, and the second one is a 99,000 square foot enclosed self-storage and related site and infrastructure improvements. And lastly, a major conditional use for the self-storage facility. Just to orient you to the subject property, it's on Riverside Drive, south of Burns Road. To the west, you have the Gardens Commerce Center. To the north, you have a variety of small properties, that most of which front along Burns Road. To this is the City Public Works facility. To the northeast, you have Comcast to the east. You have the Riverside Commerce Park, which is actually owned by the same property owner as this property, who is selling the property. And you have the Platt Five Residential Development to the south. Just a larger scale version of the area. It consists of two buildings. You have a 37,000 square foot warehouse building, 5,000 square foot office building. The site is basically entirely paved. It's surrounded by a 10-foot wall and has several nonconformities that exist today. It's currently vacant for the most part. Just some pictures of the subject site. This is a small office building from the corner of Riverside and Buckeye Street. This is looking down Buckeye Street. You see the 10-foot wall along the majority of the property. This is looking down Riverside Drive, the small office building, and you see the warehouse building in the rear. This is a shot from inside the yard of the large warehouse building. And the last picture is behind the wall, you see the building, and the other side of the wall is Riverside Drive. I thought it was important just to touch on the original proposal that we presented to staff and that we worked through staff initially and ultimately got us to where we are today. We had previously proposed a four-story self-storage building consisting of about 101,000 square feet. And the other two buildings, we were proposing to keep. So this building was actually a portion of the existing warehouse building. We were proposing to remove a portion of the east section of the building and a portion of the south section of that building, and incorporate parking around, incorporate buffers, and work with the existing site improvements. Lastly, and again, keeping the small building at the corner. Staff had raised significant issues with this project and primarily related to two items. One is the existing nonconformities. Our position initially was, look, we're making it better, but they said, no, you know, you need to address all those nonconformities. And then secondly was the height of the self-storage building, which we had originally proposed at four stories. So this is the proposed site plan that's before you tonight and at second reading, and I'll go through this very briefly. We have a, we've lowered the height of the self-storage building to three stories in response to issues that staff raised and concerns. The building height is pretty much 35 feet to the main parapet. The second building is a laboratory and R&amp;D building. It's a single story. It is higher or taller than a typical one-story building just because we understand that those types of uses typically require higher ceilings and equipment. And just very briefly, the rationale behind that R&amp;D building, when we were going through the process, this site is in the city's bioscience and research and protection overlay. So we, staff in our initial proposal indicated that we didn't satisfy the intent of that. So we went back to the drawing board. We said, look, we'll demolish both buildings on site. We'll show an R&amp;D building on the site plan, and we've engaged a national broker to go out and try to find an R&amp;D tenant for us. Just some of the other site improvements. We have a wet retention pond that staff, again, requested to have a water feature that comes on to the property. The dry detention area will be what we're calling a bio swale, so it'll be landscaped and a kind of a neat feature there. The wall around the entire Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street will be removed. We'll be proposing to keep the wall on the north side. We've worked with the fire department on access. We have loading zones. We have generators. And this shows the majority of the landscaping, and just wanted to point out that we're over the point requirement by about 2,000 points. Just touching on the architecture, we've gone with a contemporary style, keeping it simple. There'll be metal panels. There'll be a lot of glass. We have tower features. We have projections. We have muted colors, and that was also in response to a request by staff to kind of tone down the colors that we had originally submitted. This is the R&amp;D one-story building at the corner of Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street. This is the self-storage building. Again, it's a three-story building. We've lowered the height. It has very similar features to the R&amp;D building with the glass, with the projections, with the canopies over the entrances, and with the colors. This is a rendering of the R&amp;D building. I actually brought a poster board if anyone wants to see that as well. So this is the view from Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street. And this is a rendering of the self-storage building from the entrance off of Riverside Drive. Again, it's a, we feel it's a very nice-looking building and probably the nicest self-storage building in the area. Just wanted to show you a line of site analysis. This was something that the staff requested. We took it in two different areas, one from the residences across the canal into our property and one into the neighboring property across the street, just for comparison purposes. And as you can see here, this is the view into the project across the street, which is already constructed. They're closer and a little bit taller as far as being close to the homes. The one on the bottom is our proposed project. So you have the canal, you have trees, you have Riverside Drive. This is the one-story building, and unless you will be able to see around that one-story building in just a small area, you will not be able to see the self-storage building from the residences across the canal. Just, I just want to show you a few pictures. This is the existing landscaping along Riverside Drive, so it really provides a great buffer for the view from the residences across the canal. Just a few more pictures, really showing the existing mature vegetation. And this is a view actually from the canal. You can see our property and the existing 10-foot wall behind the trees. Lastly, I want to touch on the waivers. We're requesting four waivers, and we feel that they are very minor in nature. The first one is the code requires that properties in the M1A district be a minimum of five acres. We're at 3.44 acres, and I won't get into a lot of detail, but what we've done is we have lowered the height of the building, and we've reduced the lot coverage to be respective of the difference between our 3.44 acre site and the five-acre site, and I can address any specific questions relative to that. Also, there are really no, there are no five-acre sites within the M1A district. The one across the street is a little bit bigger, four, four and a half acres, and the same thing with the one on the south. It's a little bit bigger than ours. Ours is 3.44. We're requesting a waiver to keep the 10-foot existing site wall along the north property line and along the east property line. We are removing it along Riverside Drive and Buckeye Street, but we felt with the height of the buildings, it was something that provided a nice buffer that everyone was already used to and was existing. We are required by a condition of approval to pressure clean and paint the wall and actually install a vine on the north side of that wall to provide some more visual interest. And this is just another view of the wall from Buckeye Street, excuse me, from Burns Road, and this will be the wall that has, the portion that has the vine. The third waiver, this one is relatively common in the city. We're requesting just one additional principal tenant sign for the storage building. We're allowed one sign, but because this building only has one tenant, the sign that we're allowed to utilize will be face above the office facing the parking lot. We're asking for just one additional sign facing Burns Road to provide some additional visibility, and staff has asked us to reduce the size of that sign, which we have agreed to do. And lastly, waiver number four is something similar for the R&amp;D building. We're not sure if we're going to have one tenant or multiple tenants. So we're allowed one sign per tenant facing Riverside Drive, but we're asking for an additional sign for up to two tenants facing the parking lot side. And again, that's something that we feel is relatively common in the city, and those signs will also have to be reduced in size. Just the last couple of slides, we just wanted to confirm on the record that we've demonstrated compliance with the major conditional use criteria, the additional requirements for self-storage uses, the waiver criteria. We're well under the maximum height. We're well under the maximum lot coverage. We're exceeding the landscape requirements by 2,000 points, and staff is recommending approval. And lastly, I just want to thank you again. It's a great project, we feel, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner? Okay.
I just have one question. With regards to the building on Burns Road, how many signs are on that building facing Burns Road? Maybe lit up at night? Just one?
One visible from the self.
And the other two, you said, are on the backside facing east towards the self-storage, correct?
If we have two, if we have two sign, if we have two tenants, we would be allowed two signs on Riverside Drive. Oh, excuse me, the self-storage. I apologize. Yes, one sign on Burns Road, one sign on the parking lot side.
Gotcha. Thank you.
The question I have is about the wall on Riverside. When are you taking that down? You going to take that down pre-construction, or, I mean, are you going to leave it up? There's a lot of landscaping around it, too. There's a lot of trees. What are you going to do with the trees?
We are preserving those existing trees along Riverside Drive.
You are. Good.
It's an interesting question, because it might serve, we haven't talked to staff about that, but it might serve as the construction screening, so long as we can get that, something we hadn't thought about, but.
There's a standard condition of approval that we include in all of our DOs that requires screening primarily through construction fencing. And then through the permitting process, we have flexibility built in where the city engineer and planning staff reviews that. So the wall could remain as part of that safety and security plan. We have the flexibility to do that. Certainly, that, the whole intention of a construction fence is to be able to screen that, so that's certainly an option, and we can work that out with the applicant through the permitting process.
Because if you see some of these construction walls, I know we maintain them in our city, but we make the applicant maintain them.
Yeah, but look at the one that's in the county right across from our city on PGA.
On PGA, the one that the, what's his name?
Matriani.
Matriani is building. That thing is just tattered and torn, and the county hasn't done anything.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's awful. I know we don't do that, but it makes more sense to me anyway. You know what I'm talking about. Keep the wall up.
We'll certainly look at that, and as the applicant gets in more detail of their construction and where the utility locates are and what's necessary to be front-loaded from an infrastructure perspective, there potentially might need to be some modifications to that wall. But we can look at that, and our intention is to absolutely try to screen as much as possible, not just for aesthetics, but also for pollution and safety.
It's a very nice project. It's going to make that whole area look so much better from across the canal and in that whole neighborhood. Good job. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Maria.
Actually, what I, following on what Eric just said, you know, there's not much left to build in our city, and where we are going to see activity is redevelopment, which is what you're doing here. And you're doing a very wonderful job of fixing up an area that looks pretty sad. So, produce to you.
It looks tired over there.
And the whole bioscience overlay that you have there is important because scripts and the area around scripts is way too expensive for those little incubator companies to be, and you're affording them the opportunity in this building here, so I applaud you for that. And as, and if they don't come fast enough, you still have your light industrial, so it's a win-win for everybody. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, and I agree with Maria. I was just at Palm Beach State College doing an invest, a speech at their investiture ceremony, and there were hundreds of students there in the theater, and that's one of the comments that they love about the city is the fact that they can potentially come back after going away and having a job here, and that's why economic development is very near and dear to all of us. So we appreciate you keeping that element, and also, thank you for going out and looking for a company to come here and be here in our city and help our future leaders and our students have a job and be able to come back. So we appreciate that.
Most of the comments in the past have always been, there's been a dearth of good laboratory space in our city, incubator space.
Correct.
And this is going to fulfill part of it.
Yeah, this absolutely creates synergy with everything that we've tried to build throughout the years, so we thank you for that. Since the companion item, we're obviously not voting on it, but I do want to ensure that the vine is spaced. I couldn't read the actual plant material. I know in the past we did Ficus pumilla, which, if it's spaced, it's so tiny, it will take, you know, years and years and years. So it doesn't matter the species, I'm just asking that we are thoughtful to looking into the vine and making sure. And then the wall, when it does come down, obviously, we have to consider the footer and how we're handling that because of the drip line of the trees, and we don't want to lose half the trees because they are pretty mature, and I'd hate to, you know, do root pruning where we don't really necessarily mean to do root pruning, and then half the canopy is gone. So just to be thoughtful, since I won't be able to make that comment next month. I want to make sure that we, I know, right? Well, I can, but on the other side of the dais, so. Okay, thank you, I'll text. But thank you very much. So I appreciate everything that you've done, and that was all my comments. Does anybody have, and Natalie, do you have a presentation, or would you like to add any comments?
No, no additional staff presentation. I do really want to thank the applicant for working with staff. It's been a great process to work with Mike and his team, and I do really want to commend Erin Kelly for an exceptional job that she did on this project.
Thank you very much for commenting on that. I do not have any cards on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a council discussion and our vote.
Want me to do it? I'm done, I did my one.
Chairman, move 12, 2017 on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, we're going to move on to Resolution 24, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Thank you.
Resolution 24, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Frenchman's Reserve Plan Community Development, PCD, master plan to modify the existing configuration of the golf course to construct a new short game course and reconfigure certain areas of upland preserves to accommodate the golf course modifications. The Frenchman's Reserve, PCD, is located on the east side of Alternate A-1A at the intersection of Hood Road and Alternate A-1A, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, Patty.
Well, good evening.
I got to open the public hearing, sorry, and I need to ask for any expertises. No?
No.
No.
Okay. I don't have any either.
Well, good evening.
Your turn now.
For the record, Donaldson Hearing, and I have been sworn. With me is Nicole Plunkett, and she's been sworn as well. Before we start the presentation, I just did want to just thank you all for many, many years. It's hard to believe how quickly time flies. Eric, I remember the days up on the hill. I remember how you had to walk outside, and it was always so hot out there when that room was packed and we'd be waiting. So we've collaborated on so many amazing projects, from small to large, some that have an awful lot of meeting where we've shed tears at, and so I just want to thank all of you guys. Your legacy, your legacy will be shining for years to come. What you've instilled in the DNA of the city and through the staff and really everywhere we walk here, that won't change. I mean, that DNA is engraved in this city, and we will always look at the three of you as our mayor. Always will be the mayor, and we just thank you. I love each and every one of you and have just so many great memories in my heart and in my mind, and I know we'll continue to work together. Eric, we're going to continue to travel together. Let's get a trip planned. And just want to thank you all, and I know that the remaining council people have really enjoyed your leadership, and as you've heard before with everyone else who said something, you know, you've instilled your DNA in them as well, so we're looking forward to it. My parting gift to you is, I'm not going to give the presentation.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I was waiting for a parting gift for you to give. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, well, it wouldn't be an evening. All right, go ahead.
Beautiful job, Don, let's move on.
Thank you, Don.
Don, you've been a good friend to this city. You really have. You've helped so much, and you've built so many of these projects that we have approved and presented to us, and I want to thank you, too. Thank you.
Your turn, Nicole, thank you.
He was looking forward to saying that all day. For the record, Nicole Plunkett with Cotler and Hearing, and yes, I have been sworn in. Tonight, we are discussing two applications for Frenchman's Reserve. My first one that I'm going to speak about, they're going to be two separate presentations, but the first one I'm going to speak about is the Frenchman's Reserve Preserve relocation, which encompasses a proposed short game course and some enhancements to the golf course preserve areas. Our applicant is Frenchman's Reserve, in which we do have representation here along with board members. We, for this project, we pulled on an environmental consultant. We pulled on CZR, and they gave us some great resources and great feedback as to how to approach these preserve areas, as I'll explain in my presentation. And the landscape architects and land planners are Cotler and Hearing. Our request tonight is for the Planned Community Development to, of course, modify the golf course to allow us to have our proposed short game course and to reconfigure areas of the golf course with upland preserve. Staff is recommending approval of this request. Just a little bit of history, Frenchman's Reserve has not had a overall redesign or remodel since its initial conception and construction back in 2001. In order to remain competitive with some of the other adjacent golf course communities within the area who have had recent upgrades to their areas for their members, Frenchman's has decided to add a couple of enhancements to accommodate their members. Just a quick location of the area, Frenchman's Reserve is located along Hood Road and Alternate A-1A. I'm going to stick on this map for just a minute because I think it has a lot of the important information that is consistent with my presentation tonight. So our short course site is located right down here in the red area, and that's consistent with 4.02 acres. Now, that area, we worked very closely with Frenchman's Reserve and with the city forester and city staff to choose that area because it's an area of existing platted preserve that isn't quite up to the standards that the city is expecting us to have. So that was why that area was chosen. We also have an area directly to the east, 0.74 acres of preserve, which, again, working with city staff and with the city forester, has been designated as a preserve area that we are, it doesn't meet the standards, and we are going to relocate that area. The very last area is a very teeny-tiny portion, 0.013 acres, that is within the existing clubhouse parcel, and we are going to be removing that as well as it conflicts with the clubhouse area, and it's just an area that we're going to be able to, again, we worked with staff and forester to move this area. We are proposing 12 new preserve areas, which are located within the green. When we chose these areas, we very specifically made note to make sure that they're contiguous with some of the existing platted preserves. We want to have the best chance of success with these new preserve areas because we want them to be areas that will be maintained and taken care of for an extremely long time. So when we were choosing these areas, we looked at a bunch of different options, and we weighed our pros and cons, and these are the 12 areas that we feel are strongest and will have the best success with our proposed plan. Again, as I mentioned, they're consistent with the existing native vegetation areas and are contiguous to existing preserve corridors. We have a preserve area management plan. The really nice thing about the PAMP is that it provides us with some flexibility. It provides us with the flexibility to work with the homeowners, because there are 22 homes that sit on new preserve areas. This flexibility with the preserve area management plan allows us to actually work with each homeowner to provide them an opinion, to give us feedback on what they want out of their preserves in the back, and while we can still meet the city requirements at the same time. When meeting with the residents, we have conducted many ways of communicating with them, along with the required certified mailers, the signed postings. We've also worked with Frenchman's to provide a handful of opportunities along with email correspondence and actually reaching out specifically to those 22 homeowners to allow them to come speak with us, to allow them to understand exactly the process that we were going to take and what was going to be proposed behind their home. So we have met with a majority of the, majority of the homeowners, both within the clubhouse, and we've also met, both Don and I have met out with the homeowners, out of their individual homes, kind of to walk the area and to talk to them and really explain to them what's going on. I'm going to show you, we're going to start off with a short course really quickly, just to give you an idea of what we're proposing. We are proposing three holes within the short course, along with a putting green and a tee box. Now, the tee box sits on the south side of the driving range, and that allows us to have a little flexibility, that the club can have flexibility with whether they want the drivers to come to the south or to the north. Cabana Colony sits directly to the south, that's the community right here. The separation between Cabana Colony and Frenchman's Reserve is existing canal corridor right here and also in access. Now, currently today, within the existing conditions, there's not a well-defined buffer between the communities. It's an existing preserve, as I mentioned, that isn't meeting the standards of the city, but there's not a well-defined buffer within that area. So what we're planning to do is we're planning to revitalize that area and really plant a great native pallet buffer to provide that separation between the communities and give each area their privacy. I do want to make a mention that at the Planning and Zoning Board, we had a Mr. Charles Burley at 625 Hermitage Circle. You can look at my screen, his house is directly right here at the south end of the lake. His house does sit the closest to our proposed area, and his concern was that he wanted to make sure that we provided a buffer between his home, his view, this is hole number 18 here, and the short course. Currently today, there's a very thick line of aurico palms that run from the south side, see right here, the south side of the property line runs all the way up to just about here. Now, those aurico palms have been there, and the residents, as we've heard from feedback, like having that separation. So proposing the new short course game, they want to keep that buffer, they don't want to see that short course, and we are in full agreement with that. We are going to continue to maintain it, and if, in the future, if we end up taking those aurico palms out, we will plant something else that will still meet that standards. Another thing we want to mention is that the tee of hole number 18 right here provides a safety concern, so if we were to remove that buffer, we wouldn't have a little area to protect the members that are playing on the short course game. So there are a couple of different reasons why we're going to be doing that, but we do agree with Mr. Burley, and we are going to continue to move forward with that. And I'm not going to go through all the preserves, but I just want to show you two different options of preserves that we have. So this one is the option of preserves, it's located a couple of different areas in the community, but it's exactly contiguous to a platted preserve. And you'll just see, it just fits right in. We try to take all the native vegetation that's there, preserve it, and actually pull the exotics out because we want to make sure to maintain a healthy environment. And this is the second option we have, which sits adjacent to homeowners. Now, the one thing I want to mention with our new preserves is we're providing a 10-foot separation between the backs of the houses and the back of the preserve. The reason that we're doing this is because some of the existing platted preserves that run directly against the house, they don't allow flexibility for the residents. The residents sometimes want to come out and they'll put stuff, they'll put plantings along their fences, or they'll want to have access, and just providing vegetation directly up of their, up against the backs of their houses just isn't something that's been working out. So we worked very closely with the city forester, and he suggested that we put this 10-foot separation between the homeowners, and so far, everyone that we've spoken to has been happy with having this flexibility. And again, it all wraps up with the preserve area management plan, just providing flexibility so that the residents can get what they need and we get our required preserve areas as And I'm just going to flip through, I think, two or three pictures of some of the existing conditions. This is actually a homeowner that Don and I met with a week or two ago, but this is exactly what's in existing condition right now. Some of the homeowners do have plantings in their backyards, some of them don't, some of them want views of the golf course, some of them don't. So again, coming back to the flexibility aspect of the preserve area management plan is just a really great thing for this, and there's a couple additional pictures. And again, we are in agreement with everything, with all the staff recommendations and conditions of approval, and we do have our staff and team here if there are any additional questions on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yep, very good. Anybody have any questions for Nicole? No? No? Did you find any gopher tortoise burrows while you were walking back there?
I didn't. I don't know if Tom did.
Just out of curiosity, it's so sandy.
No?
No? Interesting. Okay. Very good. Well, I mean, it doesn't matter, it's already approved. It doesn't matter if they're there, they'll just stay there. Just curious. Okay. I do not have any cards on this. Do you guys have any more comments? Okay. And Natalie, do you have any questions, comments, or anything you'd like to add to the presentation? Or would you like to do a presentation?
Staff's presentation would be the same information, so the applicant did a great job presenting the presentation, so staff does recommend approval, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a discussion and/or a vote.
Madam Chair, move Resolution 23, 2017.
Twenty...
Resolution 24.
No, 24, I'm sorry. Resolution 24.
We haven't heard 24 yet.
2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Resolution 24, 2017, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We're going to move on to Resolution 23, 2017. Would the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 23, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, granting approval of a site plan amendment for 3,128 square foot expansion to the existing fitness center and spa building, construction of a new 1,590 square foot, one-story tennis center building and a golf teaching center, a new 6,750 square foot, one-story restaurant building, and additional porte-a-cachet and associated modifications to the parking lot and clubhouse architecture located on the clubhouse parcel at the Frenchman's Reserve Plan Community Development, PCD. The subject site is generally located on the south side of Grand Cornish, approximately one-half mile east of the intersection at Hood Road and Alternate A-1A. And the Frenchman's Reserve, PCD, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for any expertises.
No.
Bert, Eric?
None.
Okay, I don't have any either, and now Nicole? It's all you.
So this one's for the site plan. So, this one's for the site plan approval. And again, some of the same team, I do want to introduce the architects. We had John Glidden work a little bit on the project as well as GS4 Studios. And Cotler Hearing, again, is landscape architects, lane planners. And Simmons and White is our civil and traffic engineers. Our request tonight is to modify the site plan, the existing clubhouse facilities, to provide enhancements and expansions to the spa, fitness center, tennis facility, and park restaurant. And I'll go through each one so you can get a good idea as far as what we're doing. Again, the location, Hood Road and A1A. The particular clubhouse parcel, I do want to mention that Frenchman's Reserve is compared to some of the other golf course communities within the area, is relatively smaller compared to some of the larger ones. And an advantage that Frenchman's has within its own community, especially within the clubhouse location being so centralized, is a lot of the members and residents can access the clubhouse without having to drive their car. They can take their golf carts, they can walk, they can bike. There are many different other modes of transportation, which the club has confirmed to us they do use. So, it's nice to have such a centralized and a smaller community, they can use that to their advantage. This is an existing aerial of the site and I'm just highlighting all the areas that are going to be adjusted or changed, enhanced. And then, this is the new site plan underneath of it. And I'm going to start down at the new golf course teaching center down on the southwest area and kind of work my way around up here. The new architecture, the new facilities are going to be, remain consistent with the existing facilities today. Same with the landscaping, the landscaping, we are, we're not looking to change things, we're looking to enhance and improve them. So, the landscaping is going to remain the same palette as well. Starting at the new golf teaching center, the golf teaching center sits on the driving range and it's specifically situated and angled, it's very interesting. They have two bays out the back of the teaching facility, which they can open up and the golf professionals can give lessons in there. And it provides an enhanced opportunity because there are many different enhancements today with golf lessons and they can use some of these electronic devices to really improve their golf game. Another thing that's really neat about it is it protects the users from the elements. So, it's just a really great enhancement that the members can use within their golf area. And there are these two bays back here, which the doors open up and face the driving range. And again, the architecture is remaining consistent with the existing architecture. The park restaurant, currently, the clubhouse, Frenchman's Reserve, has a park restaurant within their clubhouse. It's a little bit higher end and what they're trying to do is make it a little bit more accessible to all of their members and provide many different opportunities for it to be used. So, what they're doing is they're pulling it out from the existing clubhouse, providing its own freestanding facility right here. And the nice thing about this location in particular is you can get the same members that currently use it today, but you can also access the pool members because they have access straight through this area right here. And then, it also sits just adjacent to the golf cart path. So, pass, golfers passing by can stop and they can enjoy the park restaurant as well. So, really, they're hitting so many different members with this new park restaurant and that's really their goal. And I do have a 3D rendering of this. And they currently do have outdoor seating today and it's going, they're going to enhance that and keep that outdoor seating as well. On the east side, they are looking to add a port de cachet with a drop-off. The main reason that they want to do this is to provide additional access, but really, to provide easy access for the golf members when they're coming in, they're unloading their golf clubs, there's a cart storage right there. It's just so easy and inconvenient, so they're looking to go ahead and do that. And then, in the green, I also highlighted two areas of the clubhouse, which just minor enhancements, adding additional stairways and covered areas, walkways. The loading zone itself is also going to be remodeled as well. It currently does exist in that area, but due to the enhancements in the port de cachet, the drop-off area, it will have to be slightly adjusted. We have run truck routing, turning templates and we have confirmed that the loading is big enough and the trucks can get in and out and we've confirmed all of that. Looking at the fitness center, the fitness center and the spa are kind of in the same building within itself. Right now, the spa is actually located right on the north side. But what they're looking to do internally with the spa, just to give you a little background, is they're going to be adding a glass coverage within the lobby area and redoing that whole area. And on the north side, where my green marker is up here, they're going to be adding three additional courtyard, spa, garden rooms. So, these rooms will be enclosed, but you'll be able to open up the doors and have a nice, small garden in each of these areas. So, it'll just be a nice, special little touch to the spa. And then, on the south end, they're going to be expanding the fitness area by approximately 932 square feet. And moving towards the tennis, the new tennis center is going to be freestanding. They do not have any such building like that right now. The purpose of having a freestanding tennis building is to provide controlled access. Right now, they don't have that controlled access where members can come in. It's just not, it's not easy for them to come in and be able to reserve their courts and get matches going. Right now, well, with the proposed new tennis center, they're going to be able to come in, have easy access. They're going to have a juice bar, they're going to have a couple of other nice amenities and a nice area to be able to watch the matches as well. They do currently have this drop-off area right here. It's going to be slightly modified to be able to have the new tennis center in that area. And the last thing I want to mention is there is currently, if you see this proposed tennis court where my mouse is at right here, there is an existing SUA easement that runs straight through it. We have been working with Seacoast Utility Authority and we're going to be relocating that easement directly to the east on top of the parking area. So, we are working with Seacoast, they're well aware and it's a non-issue. We're going to be able to work through that. And I do have one more 3D rendering for you on the tennis facility. And lastly, we're just making a couple nice enhancements to the pool, adding some cabanas, adding a children's splash pad. There are a couple of details up here, some materials of it. And again, the palette of the new buildings and new architecture will remain consistent with what's there today. We do meet the parking requirements, both for standard parking, golf cart parking. So, we are meeting the parking requirements. And again, as I mentioned earlier, this is a clubhouse where a lot of the members do travel by foot or travel by golf cart instead of car. And we are in agreement with staff and their recommended conditions of approval. And I really appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Nicole?
We're just upset there's no pickleball courts in there.
That's what we all commented on.
Are there?
Where's the pickleball?
Okay, good, good.
Okay.
Awesome, alright, now we're happy.
Alright, okay, that was a little scary there. Natalie, do you have any, anything to add?
No additional staff comments, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 23, 2017, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any cards on this, so I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for a final...
Well, Madam Chair, it's been a long run.
Vote.
But with that, I'm going to make my final resolution.
Motion, your final motion.
Madam Chair, move Resolution 23, 2017.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second, a final motion and a final second.
Hey, good job, boss.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your service and I really appreciate it, no problem.
Sure.
My name's Rob Jacoby, I'm a reformed real estate developer, I'm sorry. Rob Jacoby, 479 Savoy Drive, Frenchman's Reserve, a reformed and retired real estate developer in the gardens. And it's so much more fun, frankly, to deal with staff and they're terrific and Ron's leadership when you represent 447 homes full of taxpayers than you do when you're a developer, so. And voters. I just wanted to say something, this is a great spot to end, Eric, for you and me. Because we did downtown at the gardens and we did some other stuff. So, Eric would say, "I want you to bring a multi-screen stadium seating theater." Okay, got it, did that. You know, "I'd really like a cheesecake factory." Okay, got it. "Love a yard house." Okay, got it. I forget what else we did, but every time I'd say that, he said, "But I want to see a Trader Joe's before I retire and he retires." So, guess what, we got Trader Joe's. So, I know Maria well, Mr. Woods I don't know as well yet. You and the others have got big shoes to fill. And somebody's got to be the one that calls the developers and says, "This is what we want in the gardens." So, somebody take up the mantle, great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob, thank you for everything you've done as well, appreciate it. And John Glidden, where is he? I see him there?
I don't think I'm allowed to address the board because I'm on Planning and Zoning again, but I just want to reiterate, you guys have done an incredible job. Palm Beach Gardens is the best city in anywhere Florida to live in, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, do these guys need to fill out a comment card or anything? Are we good to go? I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
It's our last meeting.
It's our last meeting, so we're kind of going all out there.
We're flexible, we're flexible now.
Okay, anything for items for council action or discussion, guys?
Didn't Ron want to do his city manager report now? No.
You got a city manager report?
Alright, let's go get pizza.
Well, I just want to let you know that Bert and I were really, really considering having a pizza delivered while we were up here, but we decided against it.
Like Fast Times at Ridgemont High.
Yes, exactly.
We're going to get you to order it.
And have them come right up here during the meeting, but we decided against it.
And the part of Mr. Hand will be paid by who?
Right, exactly. Anyway, thank you guys all very much. This, as, I know we're going to be here at the next meeting, but we just wanted to say thank you for all your support. And it's so funny how the candidates that actually, that are running, that actually lived in Frenchman's Reserve are not even here to see their item. Anyway, I just want to say thank you so much and I appreciate all of your support and working with all of you. It's been an absolute honor and pleasure.
And for the last time.
So, now I want to move to...
Move to adjourn.
Wait, we have one more thing, please, Max, we can't forget about Max.
Max, Max. I withdraw my motion to second. Let's make it official and do it correctly. Thank you, thank you, we got seconds and...
As usual, I don't really have a city attorney report, I try to avoid those like the plague. I just wanted to thank, well, I thank all five of you, but thank the three of you that are leaving most especially because you can't be a good city attorney if your council doesn't stand behind you and support you and take your advice when it's important. And I want to thank Maria and Carl and I look forward to continuing to serve with you and whomever fills these seats as we try to move forward and work together to do what we can do, what's best for the city. But thank you for your support.
Thank you, very nice.
Thank you for everything and your legal advice has been absolutely fantastic over the years.
We're all out of jail.
We stayed out of jail.
We're all out of jail, we've never been to jail, thank God.
How do you know?
You kept us out of jail, let's put it that way.
Anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn.
And ladies?
Second.
We have a motion, we have another final motion and another final second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.